Now that everyone's hungry.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 28th, 2016. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues, Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we're back in an hour. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see. First item is approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda with the order of business for today's meeting to be changed, moving the information items before action items.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board reports. Here, all right.
So recently, I, like some of the other board members, I got a chance to attend the college fair. And I attended partly as a student because I'm a junior, but I also attended as a board member. And I think the college fair is great every year because of the fact that it's not just high schoolers, juniors, and seniors get to go. It's also, I had two older brothers, so I constantly had to go when I was in middle school. And I always, I was like, why do I have to go along, you know? But I think it's great because even at a young age, you start to see all these people with, you know, they're very goal-driven. Even if you don't know what you want to do exactly, a lot of kids know what field they want to specialize in, and they know what types of questions they want to ask. So I think it's great because every time the college fair comes around, you really don't need, sometimes you don't need people telling you the information they're telling you because, sure, you can find it online. But I think it's great because that face-to-face interaction makes kids seem like, I'm not that far behind. A lot of people think college is a big scary thing, which it is, but the application process makes it seem very scary. But I think the college fair, especially, I was talking to one of the colleges I'm interested in, and as I was talking to her, she was telling me the verbatim, what they would have found online if I went to the website. But I don't know, that face-to-face interaction really helped me feel like, I'm actually in a pretty good place, you know? And it's not just for me. A lot of kids know by this time what they want to do, and the college fair helps them put two and two together and realize, you know, I'm not that far from where I want to be. And then, secondly, this is not where I went, but one lunch. I talked to Mr. Hyville, and I was able to get a pass so I can go around during the one lunch. It was just for a couple of days because I wanted to see how the one lunches were doing because I only go to the classrooms I need to go to. I don't, I can't go around the hallways without a pass. So I got a chance to tour the building and see what was going on, and I was amazed by the amount of clubs I saw and the types of clubs. I walked into Guitar Club, which I didn't know existed. I went, I went to Apex, which is, I knew that existed. I went to things like Brain V. I went to math support, SAT prep support, and it was just amazing because, for some reason, because I didn't go to all of the classes, I just was under the assumption that, oh, all these kids are probably not, you know, getting what they need to get out of one lunch. Maybe they're just fooling around because some of the classes I went to, they were, it was like social time sometimes. But then, as I was going around, I think it's great because it's social time, but you're working at the same time. You have your peers there to support you, but you also have the teachers there for you. And it's for whatever you need. Sometimes you need a breather class, so for Guitar Club, it was like twice a week they got to meet. But then other times, you go every other day to a tutoring club or math support club, and I think that was just amazing, especially going to all of the clubs and getting to see what they were doing and getting to see how teachers were engaging their students and even sometimes just making sure that the students were making the best use of their time. It was, it was quite, it was quite a fun time for me. So I'm gonna continue doing that, and I really like to see how this one lunch has been evolving. I know it's just in great mills, but I'm sure it's the same effects, the same types of things in the other high schools as well.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, that sounds, that sounds really neat. So I went to Ridge Elementary School. They now have a running/walking club, one day a week after school. They had an overwhelming response to students that were interested in doing it, and they were only able to take 40 students. They had way more and have a waiting list to, they wanted to see how it worked out at the beginning if they were able to take more students. But Ms. Leopold and Mr. Z, who's a PE teacher there, are kind of in charge of that and getting things going. So there are several teachers that take their time and stay after school to do this running/walking club. I did, I went and helped out, but I also got to walk my laps. So I did a mile, and it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun to see the kids all excited, you know, going. What Ms. Leopold did was, is she did a scan, I guess it's like a Scantron card with the child's name, so every time they come around, she has an iPad and scans it so they know how many laps they did. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna set goals. She's gonna work with them on setting goals for themselves, you know, like they want to do, like, say, two miles by the end of the, you know, when the season is done, which is in November before Thanksgiving, or, you know, whatever their goal may be. And they also have two runs coming up, one, which is the Harvest for the Hungry, I think, for the snack sack, which they're gonna be participating in, which I think that'll be a great opportunity for the kids to get out. But it was a lot of fun. The kids were enthusiastic, and also the teachers and principal, Ms. Patako, was very enthusiastic, too, making those laps. So I look forward to going again on Monday, this, you know, this coming Monday, so stay in shape.
I, too, attended the college fair and want to congratulate Dr. Ridgell and all his staff because it was a great affair, well-attended, especially when I was, when I went through, I don't know if it was the same during the entire day, but it looked like it was going to be. And then, I wanted to discuss a little bit about student safety and school buses. I was going down to the Spring Ridge rededication, and I was on Route 5 near the Park Hall area, and I got behind a school bus, and the school bus stopped for some children. The school bus was heading southbound, and the children were over on the northbound side waiting. And it was, the child looked like maybe kindergarten or first grade as far as the size was concerned. The child saw the bus stop, the bus had its yellow lights on, and a northbound car saw the yellow lights and said, let me hit it. I gotta get by this, this school bus. And the young child saw the lights and didn't know the difference between yellow blinking lights and red blinking lights, and started to run out into the road. Fortunately, there was a parent at that bus stop and pulled the child back as the car whizzed by. But I'd like to let the public know that, you know, even if it's a yellow light, please watch out for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Five cars have run yellow lights on my son's bus already this school year, so it is very frequent, unfortunately. All right, I have two quick things to talk about. One, I'm gonna kind of steal Mr. Smith's thunder here. The Chopticon High School football team, the cheerleading squad, they have teamed up with Sending Smiles, which is an organization that sends sick, or messages to sick children. And they are having a Touchdowns Against Cancer campaign, which benefits St. Jude's Hospital. So for every, so what happens is, they have a, it's a website that's set up, and the community, and parents, and students, and everyone can go in and pledge, and then you pledge a certain amount, and then for every touchdown scored, you pledge that amount to the campaign. As of, I think, two days ago, as of this afternoon, I think they had raised over $2,500. The campaign has been running since September 15th, and it heads through October 1st. This Friday's game is the last game, and they were going to have a gold out, which I think they're gonna try and still do, but assuming everyone's gonna be in rain gear, I don't know if that's still gonna happen from what I've been reading. So, and thankfully, Chopticon has had some blowout games, so they have raised, like I said, $2,500 for this cause. I think they, Chopticon was in second place behind a school out in California, and then I think there's a school up in, or over in Prince Frederick that was in third place. So it's a very hot competition because I think Chopticon wants to have that, that first-place thing. So I know Mr. Gallo and Jessica Williams have, from Sending Smiles, Mr. Gallo, of course, is one of our teachers, and he's a coach on the football team, have been promoting this endlessly. So please, take a look at it if you're at the game, see if you want to wear gold. I know it's going against Chopticon's black and red theme, but, you know, we'll try it. And also, just for all the hard work that all those kids are putting in in order to promote it and, you know, to do what they can. The second thing is, I was volunteering today at Letty Marshall Dent, and one of the third grade teachers, Mr. Taylor, had connections with one of the USA wheelchair basketball team players who graduated from Huntington High School. And he came in and spoke to the third grade class as one of their cultural and diversity lessons. He won a gold medal as part of the basketball team in Rio, and he also had participated in the London Olympics in 2012, where they had won a bronze medal. So he is a phenomenal public speaker. He is a phenomenal athlete. He selected one child from the audience and asked him to shoot a basket, standing. And he did, and he missed. Then he asked him to sit in a chair and try and shoot the same basket. The child made the basket, so just, kind of didn't, that little lesson didn't work, but it was, I think it was just to show the children, you know, how, how difficult challenges may be for other people. He was, he was an excellent public speaker. He took a tremendous amount of questions from a group of third graders that ranged from how do you drive a car to how did you feel to win your medals. He also brought his medals with him, and so the children were able to see an actual bronze medal and a gold medal. And one of the interesting facts is that in the Paralympics, they have different sound items that they put in the different colors of medals. So based on what your disability is, you can understand if you were holding a bronze medal, or a silver medal, or a gold medal. So the kids were very engaged. He was incredibly inspirational. I do have a couple pictures. I did not tweet them out, I'm sorry, I was a little busy this afternoon, but he was just very engaging, and he has some pretty mad basketball skills as well. So thank you to Mr. Taylor and the third grade team at Letty Dent for setting that up. It was, it was just a, it was, I think it was kind of like a, you know, put-together assembly once the, you know, once they got a confirmation of a date, but it was, it was a very, very enjoyable hour, so.
Very good. We're very busy, and it's a lot going on in the school system, so we can only talk about one or two things. I attended the college fair. It was wonderful. I attended each year, and it gets better and better each year. I want to thank all the colleges that came. There were over 100 colleges there. Kathy Allen was there, and I were, and I was there, thanks to the community volunteers. It was just a wonderful opportunity. So students had two opportunities to attend, once through the school and in the evening with their parents. So it was great. And as our student board member said, she's been going to the college fair for years, so they were getting her ready for college. And I think that's a good thing to do because they were all age students there. You just don't have to be a junior or senior to go. Get your children started early, start thinking about college and what opportunities out there for them. Then it was the dedication of Spring Ridge Middle School, which was excellent. The school is beautiful. I want to thank the Department of Supporting Services for all that they did. Dr. Walker did a fantastic job. Everybody, it was a wonderful ceremony. The school is beautiful, and I have to thank the Board of County Commissioners for forward funding the $10 million so that we could get that started earlier. They didn't have to do it, but they did it, so that helped us immensely. The school is beautiful, and the curb appeal has improved 1,000 percent. The St. Mary's County Fair was wonderful. I just couldn't wait to go there to see our students' artwork, and the art building was phenomenal. Our students are so talented. All the schools had artwork displayed, and you could spend half a day just marveling at the artwork of our students. And also, even though school was closed for the day for professional development, that was an outside-of-the-classroom learning opportunity for our students. So they could learn firsthand about farm life, farm animals. They could touch many of the animals, they could see them, and many of our students participate in full age. So it's just wonderful. There was handiwork competitions, livestock, you could learn all about farming, farm animals. Arts and crafts were displayed, floral arrangements, I love that building because the floral arrangements were beautiful. The cakes that were made, wedding cakes, all kinds of cakes were good. Quilts, we have a lot of good quilters in this county, and people who can knit and crochet. There was the speech contest, the baby contest, fried grapefruit, funnel cake, roasted peanuts, caramel popcorn, oh, boy.
Don't forget the deep-fried Oreos.
Oh, my God, well, I didn't try those.
Me either.
Whoa, deep-fried, oh, boy.
I heard they were quite good.
I'm sure they were, yeah. Anyway, in the parade, Mrs. Allen and I walked in the parade, and usually walk every year or so, the support of the public school system for the parade, and it was just wonderful. There were elected officials, dignitaries, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, commercial businesses, fire and rescue, and different community organizations. So I was at marching bands, all the three high schools were there, and I was on the sideline cheering them on. So it's just wonderful that our students participate so greatly, not only in the county fair, but in other areas. Veterans Day parades, we are active and we are involved. So thanks to the school system, the teachers, the parents, and all the volunteers that made the county fair successful. And all the money from the county fair goes towards putting on the county fair the next year. So it was wonderful. It's about three or four days of the county fair. So it was a great event. Thank you.
I, I also attended the dedication at Spring Ridge Middle School, and it was lovely. And as well as going to that, I attended the National Junior Honor Society induction held for Spring Ridge Middle School, along with Mrs. Washington and Mrs. Weaver. And congratulations, a very large group of students who were inducted into the society. It's, it's always interesting, some of our schools do their National Honor Society or Junior Honor Society induction in the spring, and others do theirs in the fall, depending on the grade level that they're bringing in, so that those students can, can participate. And also went to a MABE conference planning meeting. Mrs. Washington and I have been serving on that committee this year and getting ready to go to the MABE Fall Conference. Mr. Smith and I are going to be presenting. One of the things that's really important to me is, and to all the board members, is making sure that we're engaging the student voice, not just sort of a, you know, sit at the table and, and tell us what the sports scores are, but truly a meaningful way of engaging the student voice. And it's something that in discussions with board members across the state, they're always fretting about, how do you do that? And how do you ensure that you're not just taking all the students in AP classes, the high-flying students, but rather that you have a diverse group that, that is, is talking to you and, and in a, in a very meaningful way? And I think Mr. Smith has done that quite well, and the opportunity to, to talk about it is, is one that I'm looking forward to, so.
And thank you, Mrs. Allen. It's, it's a privilege to talk about the things that are going on in St. Mary's County public schools. And I'll get to my, thank you for letting me have the big announcement. Just wait. But we have a lot of great things going on. Fair Day, while a wonderful event for everybody to come out and to participate, keep in mind that all of our employees are busy at work back at the schools. We were running about the county, taking a look at all the professional development and these collegial groupings that were getting together. It really was, it was a fantastic day.
Did you swing by and pick up a funnel cake for someone?
I won't say that I've eaten the fried oyster, the fried, the fried oysters. Fried oysters as well, and the fried, quite frankly, everything's made better by deep frying. Miss Winces isn't around to give me the scowly face on that, but it's the truth. To the point with student voice, we really have, last year, we did the Superintendent Students Advisory Council, and we really brought in a lot of people to talk about topics. This year, Sarita has passed the banner to Roma, Ms. Concaria. We're, we're going to get ready in, in October to have the first gathering of, of all the high school kids, but before we do that, next week, I'm gonna be going out and other leaders, Deputy Superintendent, Mrs. Montgomery, we're gonna be going out to the high schools during one lunch and doing what we're gonna be calling Tuesday Topics, kind of an open forum where we go out and just invite as any, any high school child, anybody who wants to come in and have a conversation about a particular topic. So next week, we're gonna be talking about one lunch with people during one lunch to hear what they have to say about one lunch. We're also gonna be talking to students about the post-Labor Day proposal edict statement, and how that's gonna impact the calendar, and what, what they think about it. So I know that we already have some of our principals tweeting out the opportunity to come in and talk with me and/or Mrs. Montgomery because we're spreading out about, across the county during that time. But that really is an opportunity to hear from kids, and we hope that the conversations are messy and chaotic. We want to hear from students themselves. And, and I will tell you that I personally respond best perhaps from my most critical friends. I work best when people tell me what, you know, what I'm, what I need to do better. And oftentimes, I find myself with people who are very good at doing that. So, so to that point, that's gonna be really exciting next week, and I can't wait to do that. And I'll be talking about that when I have the opportunity, when we get together up at, up MABE, to talk about just what our kids had to say, just that week, it'd be refreshing their mind. But the big news is, and it was announced today, we sent out a press release, this is a press release from MSDE, big MSDE, talking about little White Marsh Elementary School. And remember, last year, we were so excited because it was a Maryland blue ribbon school, and we hadn't had one for quite a while since Benjamin Banneker Elementary School. So we were so proud of that, and so proud of all of the staff and the students and the community and the school. And as a result of being named a Maryland blue ribbon school, they got a new playground and a new septic system, and actually, those things were already, those were already slated, but they certainly were fast-tracked. They had a cookie party, and they, they had a recognition.
Oh, my gosh.
And it was really quite an achievement. But the bigger part of that is, once you're a Maryland blue ribbon school, you are then invited to apply to become a national blue ribbon school. And we found out today that White Marsh has been named a national blue ribbon school. So we have, will have a fabulous evening with staff and others to attend up in Washington, DC, to celebrate. We will probably be bringing back staff from White Marsh to the board to talk a little bit about what they've done since they were named a Maryland blue ribbon school, and what they intend to do now that they are a national blue ribbon school. So please, congratulations to everybody who is involved in the application process, and to the school, the community, students, and parents, that's just a fantastic, that's just a fantastic place to live and learn. So with that, thank you.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Okay. Have, have messengers know, there's no public comment?
No public comment.
All right, so with that, we will just entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the moment we've all been waiting for, our audited financial statements are complete.
Yay.
Mr. Todd Alba. Rob Springer. As you walk across the...
Make sure I know how to operate.
Don't press the power off. Right, so just unmute it. The device in your hand has a mute button. It's really little, it's impossible to see without corrective lenses, it's on my behalf. If you make me get up and do it, I'll have to wear my glasses.
There it is, AVB.
Ta-da!
Hi. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. My name is Todd Alba, and I'm with RSM, Senior Manager of the audit firm that's been doing the audit of St. Mary's Public Schools. I'm not gonna date itself, but it's been a while. It was, it was great to catch up with Mr. Carney before the meeting, as I worked with, with Dan when he was in the position of the Director of Finance years ago. So I've been here a number of years doing this, so. First, I just want to, again, thank the board. You know, yes, we work with the staff of the school, but we work for the board. You are our client. So thank you, it's been a privilege and an honor serving you over the last numerous years, and this will be my last meeting. I did announce today a little bittersweet. I've been coming down here a long time, and I really appreciate the courtesies and the co-opererness and the very professionalism of everybody down here at St. Mary's. Had an opportunity to head up our new office that we just opened in Anchorage, Alaska, so I'm gonna be traveling north, you know, here in a couple weeks, actually. So this will be my last year, and, but I just wanted to, I know later on in the meeting, I think you guys are gonna hear from Mr. Springer regarding the RFP process that you went through for next year's audit, and just wanted to, you know, let you know that RSM did not put a bid in, mainly for the purpose of the fact that, of the transition of myself. RSM is really, their service model is built on expertise and knowledge, and all of the local and state government auditing that was done locally in the state of Maryland was all performed out of our Frederick, Maryland office from where I am. And the other partner who was in there, who used to do some government as well, he has transitioned in some other areas as well. So with my departure and his, his no longer doing it, we, you know, management has told us that we would honor our commitments and obligations, but as jobs went out for RFP, that we were no longer gonna be bidding on. So I just wanted to let you know that it was, it wasn't any kind of, you know, dissatisfaction with the school board or anything like that, or any disagreements. It, it's been a pleasure working down here and all the professionalism, but I just wanted to explain why RSM didn't put a bid in on the RFP, is that we're taking, again, all the local talent is not gonna be here anymore, and, again, we're focused on... to be here anymore. And again, we're focused on providing the expertise and knowledge. And so we don't have any locally. So from a cost prohibitive perspective, we wouldn't be able to do it. So, thank you. I did, Ms. Bailey, Ms. Washington, rest assured, I'm not going to go through all 67 pages again of the financial statements. So just to let you know, as, as Ms. Bailey, Ms. Washington sit on the Audit Committee of the Board, and I did meet with them and the superintendent and Ms. McCourt and her staff earlier to this afternoon. And we went through the lengthy document of the financial statements. They were in draft format, but they will be finalized. There were a couple of little nits that I had to change as we went through that process today. So they will be coming, you will be getting two documents, you'll be getting the financial statements. And the second package is the report to the Audit Committee, which as a board member, you'll get a copy of that. That's pretty self-explanatory. There are 12 items in there that goes down the list of things that I am required as an auditor to communicate to those charged with governance. And so that, that's a pretty self-explanatory read. If you have any questions, again, I went over that in detail with Ms. Bailey and Ms. Washington, so you can ask them. And if they cannot answer your question, by all means, somebody should have my contact information. I'd be more than happy to answer those questions. But going through, I just wanted to give you a brief highlight of the audit. And of those 67 pages, there are only six pages in that whole report that are my responsibility. The financial statements are the responsibility of management and the board. But there are six pages in there that are my responsibility. And the first is Pages 1 and 2, and that is the auditor's report on the financial statements themselves. And in that report, there are various paragraphs that you will see here. It talks about the responsibility, manager's responsibility, talks about our responsibility. But again, the most important part is the opinion on those financial statements. And as, in past years, it was an unmodified or a clean audit report that basically says that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepting counting principles. There are some, there's an other matters paragraph that talks about required supplementary information as well as the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. On Pages 56 and 57 of the financial statement document, there is the report on internal control over financial reporting and other matters and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. As for the paragraph on internal control of financial reporting, happy to report, again, for two years or three years in a row now, that there were no significant deficiencies reported or material weaknesses identified. As for compliance and other matters, the results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance that we needed to report as well. The final two pages of the report that are my responsibility is Pages 58 and 59, which is the report on compliance on each of the major federal programs and internal control over the compliance with those federal programs. Like the financial statements, the school board wasn't, there was an unmodified or a clean opinion on the compliance. There were no findings to be reported. And internal control over compliance, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified. Just a little snapshot, this is probably one of the most important pages on this item that the board always focuses on. And this is the detail of the general funding. And just to point out that this is both the unrestricted and the restricted funds combined. And just wanted to do a little snapshot here of the past three years. As you can see, back in, just two years ago, 2014, the school board was at a dangerously low level of fund balance of 600,000. And over the years of prudent fiscal constraints and spending, we are up to 12.6 million at the end of this year. And this is, this is detailed, also talks about it in the, I believe, Note 8 on Page 34 of the financial statements. But this is a snapshot out of that. Here's a little snapshot overview of the general fund budgetary comparison, which is a schedule also within the statements. This just shows on a budgetary basis, the amended budget, that there was, I did point out here, that there was a $1 point million increase from the original budget that was adopted last year to the final amended budget this year. And that 1.9 was, was the approval to use previous year's fund balance. And that was primarily for technology improvements. Just a couple of items on the revenue highlights. As you can see, the revenue was under budget from what was budgeted. And that was primarily in the restricted federal grants, just from a timing perspective. Sometimes what's budgeted doesn't necessarily get expended in that same timeframe. So that's, that's the, one of the biggest items there. There wasn't over budget or revenue greater than the budget. And that had to do with non-public placement tuition that was received from MSD. And that was just mainly due to the timing of the reconciliation this year. From the expenditures highlights, the same thing, without spending, expending those federal revenue dollars, didn't have the expenditures as well. There was utility savings, about 1.2 million, and healthcare savings of about 1.3. And this primarily related to the methodology change of the pharmaceutical rebates. CareFirst in the past has not been able to get accurate information and timely information in order to predict what those rebates were going to be from the pharmaceutical companies. And therefore, we were not able to record that as a offset against expenditure. Well, this year, they were able to provide that information. I personally had conversations with the representative of CareFirst and to go through it. Because from an accounting standpoint, there are some things you have to really, there's some stringent rules that you have to meet in order to record those type of refunds. And all those things had been met. So we, it allowed us to record those refunds this There were several new GASBs. GASB is the Government Accounting Standards Board, which dictates the accounting policies and principles for the school systems, financial statements. There were a couple of new ones, but nothing that had any significant impact on those statements. And we talk about those in the Note 1 of the statements. In Note, I believe Note 13, the last note of the financial statements, there is a detail of some new GASBs that are coming down the pike. And just wanted to point out, in particular, GASB 75 will be required to be adopted in two years. So for June 30, 2018, that will need to be adopted. And that's kind of the counterpart of GASB 68 that was last year with the pension requiring you to put the pension liability on the full accrual government-wide statements, not on your fund budgetary statements, but on the GASB 34, the full accrual statement. So this, this GASB is going to have a significant impact on your financial statements. So just forewarning you on that one. And in our discussions today, I believe, the staff was going to start talking to the actuary Bolton, I believe, who does your actuary work, and starting talking to them and to start to get a flavor of that process that they're going to go through to calculate that amount and what kind of estimates they're going to have for that. That was very brief overview of the audit. Important part was, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control and
Unmodified.
Unmodified, clean report, yes.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
If you have any. No? Mrs. Weaver?
The question I had was, okay, so with the charter school, and they have their own internal audit that goes on there, how do you work that with incorporating it into the overall school systems audit if theirs hasn't been completed yet?
The money that is distributed to the, to the charter school is subject to our testing. But from the perspective of, we get the reports, and I did, there was a draft report, yeah, there was a draft that I saw of any kind of findings or anything. So we do look at that. But again, the money that's going out, that we, we do look at that money as well. So it's, it's part of the general fund that was subject to the audit there.
Okay.
And those numbers were rolled in, are rolled in with the, they're accounted for in a separate fund, but they're rolled in as part of the general fund.
Okay. And now, we did, the board members did receive the information, more detailed information, but it was like, very recently, like right before.
I told you, they don't like to show it.
Which is fine, but we did have the opportunity to look at it.
Okay.
Look over it. Well, I did. And I think everybody else said they did too.
Yeah. And like the, like the charter school, just, I know you didn't ask this question, but part of the schedules, there's a supplementary schedule in the back of the statement that details by school, the school activity funds.
Right, I saw that.
And we do audit procedures on that as well. We do sample disbursements to make sure that what the school was spending the money on is legitimate and is following procurement policies of the board. So we, those, those funds are subject to our audit procedures as well.
Okay. Yeah, I did see that. That was kind of towards the end.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carney?
Okay. Now, you pointed out that the, the fund balance has gone to 12 million, but it's, you know, there's 11 million with strings attached, leaving 1 million for a, you know, emergency fund.
Right.
On a $200 million budget, it seems like it's rather low. That was my thought there. And then on the GASB 75, it's just going to show up as a contingent liability?
No, it will actually show up as a recorded liability. So now, so last year, when GASB 68 came into play, that related to pensions. Now, granted, the pension of the school system, the majority of that is the burden of the state or is recorded on the state's financial statements. There's a piece that, that St. Mary's records, and that relates to the employee system. The teacher system is, is recorded by the state itself. So there is actual, if you, when you look at the financial statements and the government-wide statements, there is a, there is a pension liability that is physically recorded as a liability. Same thing with OPEB. There is, there is a liability that's recorded now that you have. And that's basically has been the deficit between what the actuary has determined as the annual cost of the OPEB and what you were physically contributing, one, to the trust and also on the pay-go basis. But this is going to make you, 75 will make you record the full actuarially determined liability, unfunded liability.
Thank you.
I have, I have no questions. I covered mine this afternoon.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions. Thank you.
You noted that there are three areas that you need to address after the audit conference this afternoon, correct?
The, I'm sorry, there were 12 areas. And there's a report that's going to be, is addressed to the Audit Committee.
Mm-hmm.
But as board member, you'll get that whole package as well. And basically, there are 12 areas. And it talks about our responsibilities, the board's responsibilities. It talks about the accounting policies and any new ones that were adopted, if there were any
Yeah.
Major transactions.
But you mentioned that there were three areas that you needed to, that after today's conference, you, three?
Oh, I, there was just some changes to the financial, it was a typo in one thing. And then we changed some wording on something else, so it read better.
Right.
Sorry.
So the 12, the 12 areas are not audit findings?
Right, I understand.
So let's, let's just make that perfectly clear.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah. I, I understand your question. There were, there were a couple of things that I needed to change in the financial statements in order to finalize them.
Right. And because what we were given was the draft.
Correct.
And so to Mrs. Weaver's comment about, we had gone, I've already gone through it.
Right.
And so just to be able to understand what those, if there was some
They were typos.
Okay.
Yes.
That's, when you mentioned it, I was like, all right, well.
Yeah. There's no number changes. There's no, there was, there was a couple, I think two spelling typos, and the spell checker didn't get. And the other one was just modifying a sentence in one of the footnotes, just to make it read better.
Understand. Thank you. I appreciate it. And also, thank you for sharing and truly answering my question that I was going to ask Mr. Springer for the action item, which was
Yeah, I figured there were going to be questions, but I just, again, I just wanted to make you assured that the fact that there was, you know, no issues between us and the school system or vice versa. And, you know, again, it was a business decision on RSM's part. And again, it's been a privilege. And if I wouldn't be moving, I would have definitely put a bid in.
Well, having served on the Audit Committee for a number of years, and I very much appreciate the, the work that you've done over these many years and the, the way that you have, the way you've approached your task, very, very thorough. And I do appreciate it. So thank you. You will be missed. But enjoy Anchorage.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I just want to make one last comment to something that he mentioned for the healthcare savings of the 1.3.
Mm-hmm.
Once again, that was not a methodology change on our side at all.
Correct.
It was CareFirst who firmed up their ability to recognize the refund. And because they did that, we are now required by accounting practices to recognize it this year. We had nothing to do with it. It had to do with a third party, right?
That is correct.
We did not find money or have money stashed away.
Because, because when we
He said it.
When we got the confirmation, I was like, what is this?
Right.
We've never had this before. And, you know, that's what, that started the dialogue between us and CareFirst. And we had several phone calls. And yes.
Right. And it is a very stringent list that CareFirst has to follow in order to allow us to recognize it in this fiscal year. So I just, that just needs to be repeated as many times as we need to.
Absolutely. Because it is a change, a significant change
Yes.
Over what has happened in the past. And I think we're all pretty sensitive about our healthcare line item, so.
I want to thank Todd and his firm for all the work that they've done over many years. I won't go back.
Thank you.
But he definitely was a very helpful individual when I was learning the ropes of school finance. Thank you and good luck
Thank you.
Here in Alaska.
And one last thing, again, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank Ms. McCourt and Mr. Springer and the professionalism and the dedication of that, of that team. You know, it's a lot of data. We asked a lot of questions. We asked a lot of requests, a lot of invoices, a lot of checks to be pulled. So again, and it's a tight window. I mean, this, this thing is due to the state on Friday. I'll go back and finalize the report tomorrow. And we will have seven-bound copies UPS to MSD, waiting for them on Friday morning, so to meet that filing requirement. So it is a tight window in the amount of information that we have to get through and process. But again, I just want to thank them for the courtesies that they have extended to us over the years. I wish I had, all my clients were like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And being on your side, I can only imagine how much you are appreciating what the finance staff has done and pulled together. And, I mean, the volume of schedules that, that you request and that then they have to pull supporting documentation for, I'm sure it would make some people's heads spin. So, thank you very much to everyone on your staff. So, all right. Any more questions?
No.
Okay, good, because the thing's down. All right. Mrs. Bachner and Ms. Dawn Pipkin.
Let's talk about student
Student learning objectives.
Yes, yes.
And I love the fact that Ms. Pipkin is a part of this, especially given the close association she has had with writing curriculum for Maryland College and Career Writing as Standards.
And all things TPE and Maryland.
And I'm very excited to be here with Dawn Pipkin because we have worked with each other until this year for the previous nine years. And so, and we're taking our show on the road to the Maryland Assessment Group. So we'll present this again next month. We actually presented this also, every year we're adding to our presentation. We presented it the first time to Maryland Assessment Group. Last year, we're asked back this year to do an extension of that. So you're going to get a mini version of MAG.
Mini MAG.
So Ms. Pipkin is going to start our presentation tonight.
So, good evening, board members. Good evening, Superintendent Smith. As Ms. Bachner said, that we have been working and we have kind of started SLOs together in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So I want to give you a kind of picture of where we've been with student learning objectives and where we have changed in the several years since we've implemented them as part of evaluation system. So originally, St. Mary's County Public Schools was one of five counties that were, had agreed to pilot student learning objectives in their local system before, while the state model was still being developed. I had the opportunity to serve on the Maryland Educator Effectiveness Council that was one of six teachers who gave input to the evaluation model and thinking about what the state model would look like and how we would incorporate student growth as it relates to the Race to Top application and adding student growth as a component of teacher and principal evaluation. So I came back from the Effectiveness Council So I came back from the Effectiveness Council, and we were asked to be part of a pilot. Actually, I sort of volunteered us to be the middle school after I talked to Mrs. Bachner. When we talked about how to, how to pilot locally, we wanted to have schools from all three levels. We also wanted to have schools of various size and with different staffing and different student needs, so that we could make sure that we were having a representative sample of how something like this would roll out in our different schools. So Chautauqua High School was our high school participant in the pilot originally, Leonardtown Middle School as the middle school, and then Lexington Park, Mechanicsville, and then Benjamin Banneker. So thinking about the diversity and the sizes in those schools, that's, those five schools were part of the pilot evaluation team. So there was a teacher and the principal, the building leader, from each of those schools that made up the pilot evaluation committee, and that group worked. There were individuals from Eastmack also on that, representing Eastmack, because it was a partnership between the school system and the association to develop that part of the evaluation system. At the beginning, we had to really kind of come to some agreements, like what do we want the student growth component to add to the evaluation system? And what were we going to agree was the basis for how the evaluation system would change? So I'm going to talk about that for just a little bit. So as we were thinking about student growth, and I think if we all think about schools, you all shared your reports earlier about visits to schools. Every school is different. Every classroom is unique. No classroom, no school looks exactly alike. So there were some really basic tenets that we wanted to include, and that the school system, the association, the pilot committee, all agreed were really important. And they're listed on the screen for you. I'm not going to read them to you, but we really emphasized the fact that when students are in school, teachers can teach and move students, and that students will grow when they're in school. And so one of the agreements we had was about students who were included in the student learning objective or student growth part of the evaluation, meeting the state standard for attendance, which is 94%. It's not that teachers aren't still teaching students with attendance problems, that's a real, very real issue, but when we're talking about data being included in the evaluation, we wanted to make sure that it was based on some kind of measure of student engagement and student involvement in the instruction. Also, we wanted to make sure that when we were including student assessment data, we weren't looking at one single measure. So we didn't want to make, we didn't want to set up an evaluation system that there would be one single test, one single assessment, one single performance that would be the overall determinant of the student growth piece. And then lastly, there's a piece I'll talk about in a little while, and I, I referenced it, that whole, every classroom is different. And from year to year, every classroom is different. So being able to think about and have a way to capture in the evaluation model, what makes each classroom different, and for teachers to be able to talk about that, because when they're planning for instruction for students, they have to think about the unique opportunities and challenges that exist in meeting the needs of all of the children in a given classroom from year to year. So we named the student learning objective portion or the student growth portion Domain Five. I'm sure that you're all well-versed in the other four, professional practice and responsibilities, environment, preparation and planning, instruction. So this was kind of a natural progression, just to add the student learning or student growth portion. And we really, when we built it, we mimicked the other four domains that are based on the Danielson model that we've had since my first year of teaching in 2000. We really wanted to make sure that we focused, because student learning at any point is a picture in time. You know, that assessment that I looked at today is going to be different in a week if I'm still teaching the same standards and working toward a new goal. So we wanted to make sure that when we were thinking about it, it wasn't just about incorporating student learning, but it was also being able to capture the link between what the teacher is doing and how that's impacting student learning. Because data is one part of the story, but how the teacher is planning to meet the students' needs is really the part that we were really looking to make sure we were honoring and respecting, so that when we were thinking about it, we're thinking about the teacher's impact on student growth. Additionally, we needed to make sure we were thinking about, and this was something that we talked about a lot at the state level, only about 30% of teachers across all content areas teach in a tested subject, when we think about state assessments and things like that. So if we were going to build an evaluation model, we had to build a model that was going to be fair and equitable and able to be used with teachers across all types of assignments. So it wasn't just focusing on, and there were some systems that we're grappling with just using reading and math data and applying it to every teaching position in the school, and teachers don't feel that that's fair. You know, they want to be able to be talking about what they're doing to move students in their content. So we wanted to make sure we had some flexibility in not only meeting the needs of different assignments, like band, art, music, but we also wanted to make sure that we incorporated different kinds of assessments, because there are multiple ways to assess student learning. We also, so to take in apart the teacher piece, you'll see that reference to intervention and supports. So when we think about looking at student growth and student growth targets, interventions and supports are documentations that teachers put on their form as part of the evaluation process, where they're talking about the kind of strategies they're using to move students and reach all, all students. It might be a formal research-based intervention. It might be extra help offered during homeroom or a one lunch. It might be contacting parents. It might be providing some kind of at-home resources or supplements. But any kind of interaction that a teacher did as a result of seeing how a student was progressing toward the standard or the goal would be documented in that intervention and support. So it was a way for the teacher to show how they were working to move all students towards the target. So on our form, and you'll see it in a little while when we talk about it, it's called the complexity factors. When we talked about it at the state, and that's modeled off a part of the national board process, when you go through national board, you do what's called an instructional context. And it's all, just a one-page, here's what my classroom situation looks like. I'm teaching art on a cart, and I have 35 students, and so it's not about saying, here are all my problems or here are all my challenges, it's about, this is my reality. This is what my classroom looks like. Here are the needs, and here's the variety of students, and maybe special circumstances that have to be taken into account. So we adopted from the beginning and still include complexity factors as part of the process. Complexity factors are a variety of things. Sometimes a complexity factor for one year for us was that we were under renovation. You know, if we can't pretend that being under renovation and, and even though we have good things in place, that those things don't sometimes impact student learning and the environment. More than anything, we wanted to make sure it was, it was doable. We did not want to create a situation where it was creating an onerous workload for teachers or administrators, because this is just one part of what they do. So really, the whole SLO process is really a snapshot of what teachers do to monitor student learning and to monitor engagement. They're not collecting data. They are report cards, interims, all of those things, giving students feedback on their papers, but they're not collecting data on every single class they teach. They're choosing a subgroup of students or a class to collect this data on as a representative sample. And then we wanted to make sure that it encouraged professional growth. So this was an opportunity for teachers to think about a particular area that students are struggling in and what they might need to know additionally, what kind of professional learning or what kind of supports they needed in order to continue to grow their practice to meet the student needs in that area. So we wanted the evaluation tool to do that as well.
So when we started, we had four areas. We, teachers could choose three of the four for their SLO. We first started five years ago. There was formative measures, which you've heard a lot about with formative assessment. Hope to do more, as you're going to get some books for a book study. Summitive at that time, years one and two, we were using MSA data. That was your summative data. If you were in a tested area, you might have also used HSA assessments. Also, I think they had to use KRA in kindergarten, so they were using summative assessments. Years three and four, we did not use summative. We took those out, so it was just left with formative, performance and growth, and we didn't use summative, because that's when the transition to PARC happened, and we didn't want that to be part of the evaluation. That still this year is not part of the evaluation until we go through SSE, ESEA.
ESSA.
Yes. ESSA. And we get that guidance from the State Department about how that's going to affect the evaluation system and, and those kind of things. So still, we're not using that as part of the evaluation, but rest assured, teachers are using that data to kind of check some balances themselves along the way. Performance assessments, this is where we found, and you're going to see some changes that Ms. Pipkin is going to share with you, that she's worked with Eastmack and Dr. Mar on for just this year. We're still evolving. Every year, we have some changes based on the needs of students and teachers who are using this evaluation system. And performance, we're finding that lots of teachers, like PE teachers, art teachers, theater teachers, even science teachers with their lab experiences and lab, are using a lot of performance measures. And then growth measures, and you've heard probably a lot of growth, if you give a pre-test and a mid-year and a post-test, that's growth. Where did students start on that material and where did they end? And we've had them for 180 days, so we're, want to see a target amount of growth. Then, as I said, at the first year, they picked three of those four, and then years, excuse me, first and second year, they picked three of the four. A third and fourth year and fifth year, they've picked, actually, we're in our fifth year right now. So the third and fourth year, they picked two of the three, and then we'll tell you where we are this year in the fifth year later on as the final revision. For each of those, of those elements, whatever they selected at the end of the year in May, when you had your final evaluation conference, those were rated as ineffective, developing, effective, and highly effective. Now, I believe we are the only county in the state that are using developing, or there's more than? There's more? Not a lot, though. Most of the state is going ineffective, effective, or highly effective, but we felt it was really, really important to put developing in there for a few reasons. If you are a new teacher, you may not be ineffective or effective, but you are developing, and that maybe is what you should be during your first year. Other teachers maybe have moved from a content area. Maybe I was always teaching, maybe I was teaching high school science, and now I'm teaching seventh grade, you know, seventh grade life science or seventh grade science. I may be developing for a period of time until I have that one year under my belt. So it's not necessarily a bad thing. It just shows them that there's work to be done, and it's focused work based on the evaluations. And that's the same for domains one through four, which Ms. Pipkin alluded to before also. We'll just go next. And this is, I feel, the beauty of the SLO. If you have, you know, some knowledge of the SLO, this is the beauty of the SLO is that for each of those formats or those are what they select, growth, formative, summative, and performance assessment, they get two, two factors go into that rating. And one is the overall performance, and on the left side, you see the rubric for those. It goes from ineffective to highly effective. And then evidence of support and intervention. So as I said, I feel as, as a former principal that used this and using it now with the supervisors that I evaluate, I think this is the beauty, because this is where people are encouraged to stretch themselves, set goals for themselves that are, because we all know you could set easily attainable goals. But this helps teachers have the comfort level that I can, I can set a goal for my students that really stretches me and stretches my professional practice, because the evidence of support and intervention is basically that net that says, here's what my goal was in overall performance. This is what I'm setting for myself. But if I didn't meet that target goal, I set it lofty, I stretched myself, I really, really wanted to kind of do some out-of-the-box thinking with my kids. If they have evidence of support and intervention, what they did along the way to meet those students' needs, if they didn't meet their goal, they still can be effective and highly effective. So that's the beauty of it. So that really encourages teachers to set goals for themselves that are not, I wouldn't say minimally compliant. They're really reaching the ceiling with the SLO, given where we are with that rubric. And given that the committee was made up of administrators and Eastmack and teachers in all facets, and we all were committed to this and see the beauty in it till still today, because that hasn't changed in five years. This hasn't changed in five years. The old adage, "I taught it and they didn't get it," doesn't go with this at all, which is, I feel, the power and the professional development of the system.
Sure. In this rubric, the one language change we did make throughout that time was originally we used to talk about subgroups. We still are looking at subgroups. We're still working on them, but when we talk about the diversity of classrooms across the system, there are some classrooms that there isn't a subgroup evident. So when you talk about closing, so we really changed the language to focus on the gap, because that really addresses trying to move all students regardless of where they start. So when we changed the language, when we were focusing on subgroups, it wasn't applicable to all teaching assignments and teaching areas, because to be a subgroup, there needed to be five children in a particular category, and some of our classrooms don't have five children in any particular subgroup, and some have different varieties of that. So that focusing on closing the gap addresses the achievement gap while still not kind of documenting individual subgroups that doesn't necessarily apply.
We expect every student to grow. It changes along the way. There have been changes every year to this document, so, and that, as I said, is the beautiful thing. I talked about this already, that we had started three required, now we have two required, and even this year, it's changed a little bit, and Ms. Pipkin's going to share that with you in a little bit. And we also had some, I think it's the next slide, but I, I won't, and Ms. Pipkin went to the gap. National training. I was not involved with the national, national training, but that was done by C-TAC. And C-TAC stands for Community Training and Assistance Center. And what that did was, we had a group of people that were involved from St. Mary's County Public Schools in that training. And what it did was that that second layer of setting goals for teachers and administrators, because it showed them different ways based on the construct of their class, the composure of their class, how to set even more targeted goals. For example, if you give a pre-assessment and you look at that pre-assessment data that you have bands of students, you may have emergent learners, instructional learners, advanced learners, and then maybe setting goal or percentage of growth for those three different bands, where they started from and where they expected. So if you're not looking at just the class average and expecting maybe a 20% growth for the entire class, but looking at where your developing learners are, maybe they scored on a pre-test a 35%, and their goal is 50, where your more advanced learners maybe started on the pre-test at 65 and their goal is 80. So starting with those kind of differentiated ways of looking at setting goals was done by C-TAC. And then brought back to all the other schools by that group. And we just talked about the National SLO Training Conference on that. The other new thing that we have had in the last few years happen is that, you know, getting teachers from being silos to, you've heard lots about professional learning communities or PLCs. A lot of PLCs to this day, probably starting the second year all the way to now, and it's getting stronger and stronger, are really working together to collaborate to write their SLO goals and getting really targeted into standards. I'll give you an example from our school last year, Leonardtown Middle School, because it's not my school anymore, it's Dr. Denny's. But last year, the seventh grade PLC met with me, and even though I did an individual evaluation conference with each of the seventh grade math teachers, they collaboratively said, the standards that we feel our kids must have mastery of before we send them to eighth grade math class, is they have to have a mastery of integer operations. So that was their focus standard for all their students, is they want to have evidence when those kids came out of their class in seventh grade, that they had mastered those four essential skills for that, that pre-algebra work they would start the next year. So that shares with you how the PLCs, and then individual student conversations that involve the complexity factors and things like that, were done individually with teachers, of course, as a confidential, in a confidential manner with their own evaluation conference. But they were working together all year to set goals and then writing assessments along the way and diagnostic tools to kind of measure the growth, do flex grouping. That came, if you've heard of flex grouping? That came, I think that's had a big emphasis based on this SLO conference or this SLO process. This year. So Dr. Mar works every summer. He's been instrumental. I think he led the group and facilitated all the pilots. And couldn't be here tonight, but he had, he had just, he said, "If anybody has questions, let me know, because I can help." But he actually sat down with some Eastmack representation and teachers, and they actually made this year's version, kind of tweak a little bit the worksheet. So Ms. Pipkin, who was part of that process, is going to share our last few slides with us of the, where we are right now this year and the changes we've made just for this year.
So for the next several slides, you'll just see pieces of the worksheet that teachers use and upload as part of the evaluation process to online T-PAS. So this part mostly hasn't changed, but what we're putting in it has changed. In the beginning, where we put learning content, people used to pick language arts or chorus, and they would be very general. But the last couple of years, especially through the work we had with C-TAC, the power in SLOs and student learning objectives aren't specific to Leonardtown Middle School or Maryland, they're happening nationwide. So that idea that you're going to pick very specific, as Ms. Bachner said, learning objectives that are gatekeeper skills, that a student really needs to learn and understand this to keep that, or otherwise it'll prohibit them from going on and being successful the next year in the content. So teachers are getting better, and one of our focuses in the last year and will continue in the future is them picking specific learning standards as opposed to general content and saying, well, this is the content I teach. So they're picking- So they're picking specific college and career readiness standards as their SLOs. And those standards that they pick are reflective of student weaknesses that they see in park assessment data, in their own classroom data, in pre-assessment data, in order to be able to decide what their area focus is. Doesn't mean they're not teaching all the rest of the standards. It doesn't mean that, but this means for their SLO work, it's going to focus on an objective or two from the standards. The interval, originally when we first started, we said every interval had to be a year. But the reality is, if it's very important content, I may not be teaching fractions all year, but fractions is definitely a gatekeeper skill for lots of other things and higher levels of math. So I might be focusing on my eight or 12-week fraction unit, and so that might be the duration of the timeline for that SLO. But I'm certainly going to come back and monitor students' progress as I go on to teach ratios and proportions and other things that relate where students would apply their knowledge of fractions for math, as an example. So the timeline can be a year, or it could be a shorter window, but it can't be two days. They need to pick something that's worthy and rigorous and not something that if it's, if it's easy enough for students to learn it in two days, it's really not a worthy SLO target. So we're really looking at some of the more richer learning. And then attributed students. When we first started, attributed students, people were really picking their whole class. But as that time has evolved and thinking about that, teachers are starting, I talked to teachers today, and one was picking 25 students across their day to focus on for their SLO whose reading levels aren't commensurate with grade level, and that's going to be their focus group. So looking at different student needs and looking across their day, they might still pick a class, and maybe that class is particularly challenging because of the needs of the students or because it's before or after lunch, or it's the end of the day. But they can also pick certain subgroups or populations of students that they really want to make sure they're honing their practice on, or they can pick a group of students across their instructional day to use as their data set. So as Ms. Bachner said, originally, we were picking three student learning objectives, and we had to pick one that was a formative, one that was summative, and one that was growth. But what we found is not all contents lend themselves to all three of those kinds of assessments. And we've been talking a lot about pre- and post-test lately because the pre- and post-test is a snapshot, but it's across lots of different standards. And there are some contents, I'll use high school biology for an example, that students, if I give them a pre-test in biology, it's likely they're not going to know anything. So why should I waste that instructional time to give them a pre-test when they, because they haven't had any biology learning? So that idea of a pre- and post-test being a great measure for everyone, you know, has really evolved. So we still do use some pre- and post-tests, but not everyone is using pre- and post-test for some of their data sets anymore. So this is a snapshot of a piece of the form. There's a box like this for each student learning objective, and you see here, so teachers would pick which kind of assessment they're going to be using to monitor student growth related to the standard that they're working on. And then they're going to think about how they decided. So that first column talks about the baseline data. Why did I choose that standard? What did I see in the data that I had from the beginning of the year and even park data to make me think that this would be an area I needed to work on with my students that year? And then in the middle, they're going to identify the measures. They could be county assessments, they could be PLC-created assessments, they could be classroom assessments. And we've been having a little bit of a shift to thinking more about classroom assessments because that's the data that's closest to instruction. So when we think about using classroom assessments, I'm going to have that data much quicker and more regular. So when I use classroom assessments, I have more chances to react to what I'm getting in the data and change my instruction accordingly. And then the last box talks about the target, and it has to be measurable. So they're thinking about, based on where students started in that baseline data, how much growth that they are trying to achieve across the year. Ms. Bachner mentioned earlier about setting rigorous targets. And as you can imagine, it was in the national conversation about student growth being part of evaluation. But we had lots of great conversations about it locally, and we really, because of the intervention and supports, we want people to set rigorous targets. I would rather you set a rigorous target and not quite make it than set a target you know you're going to make. And that's been a lot of conversation that we've had locally about encouraging teachers to set rigorous targets for their students. And the work with C-TAC has helped that. And that's just been the last couple of years that we've had different ways to think about setting differentiated targets. Then this snapshot talks a little bit about the complexity factor piece. There's a box for that. These all, teachers can type in them and add their data and monitor that all year long. So this form is a living document. When they start and have their SLO conference at the beginning of the year, they start it, and they should be adding to it, adding notes, adding documents. Complexity factors happen, students are on home-hospital teaching. That affects the instruction that they're receiving. So all of that is part of the conversation. And so that complexity factors is documented on the form as well.
Wait, I just have to.
Yep, please do.
And one, one big change also this year is that although they could select from formative performance and growth, they can select performance for both their SLO1 and SLO2. They'd have to be two, of course, different measures and two different data pieces that are baseline and things like that. But given their content, that might make more sense. For a PE teacher, it might make much more sense to have two performance measures than to have, you know, a performance and a growth, given what Ms. Pipkin has just talked about growth. So that is the change for this year. That's been a big one that I think has been appreciated and valued by teachers. Sorry.
Wait, notice we also talked about only focusing on two SLOs. It wasn't about how much data you could churn out. It was about, again, that representative sample. So we have stuck to two SLOs, and we feel like that's a good representation of how that teacher's work is impacting students. So this is towards the last part of the form, and this was a really nice change because we had multiple forms, and we're always talking about workload, and we're always talking about how we're documenting what we're doing and making the process easier. So one of the changes is that, that mid-year reflection and the end-of-year results all go in this form because as part of the evaluation process, the staff member has to sign the form at the end of the year saying, "I had my conference, I've had my evaluation." But there wasn't a mechanism to do that. That was a separate form and trying to keep to what we need to do for evaluation and documentation, but make sure we're staying true to that. We were able to combine that. So the piece that's missing on the bottom of this form is where the employee and their supervisor, building principal, assistant principal, actually sign off on the form about the conference and that they've had it. So there, the mid-year conference, there's a place to document, "How are things going so far?" And what's unique and one of the really important features of the mid-year conference is for teachers to be able to talk about, "Is my target realistic? Am I on track?" And to have that conversation with the building leader or whoever's doing their evaluation cycle so that they can talk about what's going well. You know, maybe as they're looking at their data and they thought this was going to be a great target, they found that there's some other piece of knowledge, some other content that students are missing that's slowing down the learning, and they're having to go back and do some recursive teaching. So at this time, through agreement with the administrator and the teacher, they can adjust their target mid-year if they need to, but it's still a part of a conversation with their administrator. So there's a place for the mid-year reflection and to have a conversation about how the data's going and what they see the strengths are and any problems that they're having. This might also be a time where they ask for some professional development. You know, "I'm really struggling with, I've tried X, Y, and Z. I need somebody who knows PDQ. So I'm going to go and talk to my colleagues, or maybe I'm going to go to a conference or a work session, or I'm going to participate in a webinar and look for some other ways to meet student needs." The other piece on the bottom, which is really kind of interesting and that Ms. Bachner had gotten from a colleague, and we've kind of incorporated in the form, is that this is supposed to be a conversation. Whenever you have an evaluation, it's a conversation. People don't go in and say, "Okay, I deem you." This is the teacher talking about what they're doing to impact student learning. And so there's an opportunity for the conference to happen where the teacher actually reflects on where they are, whether they, based on their progress and intervention supports, and based on the language of the rubric, are developing, are effective, or ineffective, or highly effective in each of those areas, overall performance and intervention and supports. And so they take that form to their conference, and then they have a conversation. And then the evaluator decides that final rating, but it can be done in a collaborative conversation such that the teacher is talking about what they're doing and the building leader is able to have the conversation and really kind of hash out where the areas are for growth and growth potential for the employee. And I think that's it. Oh, no, last part. And then, as I talked about earlier, this is the box to document intervention and supports. So if we have students who aren't meeting the state standard for attendance, that would be in complexity factors. And we have students that have other extenuating circumstances, like I mentioned, home-hospital teaching, things like that, that's a complexity factor. But here's where a teacher would document all of the myriad of things that they did, recursive reteaching during small group time in class, providing sessions during one lunch or before or after school. So anything that a teacher is doing, whether it be formal intervention or informal, this would be documented here to talk about the role that they're playing in monitoring student achievement and continuing to move students as far as they can. And I think that's it. If you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to entertain them.
So first of all, I wanted to say, I liked hearing about how, well, like a lot of times students worry that, you know, I'm just a number. Like when people look at them, they just look at, well, when teachers evaluate them, they just look at the beginning and the end. And I liked how a lot of factors go into looking at how students progress over time. Like you said, it's just one snapshot. One test doesn't define them as a whole. And also, I was wondering about how, you were talking a little bit more about, like, on the teacher's part, what they would take away from the student's environment and how the students were performing. But also, is there any way to incorporate, like, looking at students, not feelings, like their soft skills, like how they feel in their environment in terms of like if they feel they're in a supportive environment? Because a lot of times, I know, I used to like help aid an elementary school teacher, and I would do like small group work with students. And a lot of times, they would come to me and ask a lot of questions, but they would say, "I'm too scared to ask my teacher for help," because they, they felt like it was just, not like that it was a supportive environment, but they felt that they didn't want to be singled out in that whole class setting, and that sort of hindered them in terms of how much they progressed over the years with reading, for instance. So is there any way, it's through all the grades, I feel like sometimes students aren't exactly feeling like they are in a very supportive and conducive environment for learning. Is there any way to, for teachers to evaluate that as well?
And I think that's a lot of times the building leader's role, Rama, is to instill a culture in the school and make sure that happens. I do, will say that the noticeable difference I've had in that regard versus this system is that there's a lot more personal conversations with kids about their own data. Many, many times you'll see, and I'm sure you've experienced this yourself before, where teachers, after a midterm or an assessment or anything, or maybe even after a review, this happened to my own child the other day, the teacher had each kid, where small groups of kids come to them and, and shared with them where their deficit areas and where they needed to grow and what they could good on. So I think a lot more, and more conversations like that with children where they're starting to have those personal interactions with kids rather than the whole class, I think it is, will always foster that in a positive way, well, we hope. But I think that this process really encourages or fosters that, that more personalized feedback than before, which will turn foster maybe the comfort.
I think also, sometimes, and especially I noticed as I, as we got older, it was, especially middle school, teachers would want our feedback. But I think as we get into high school, and it's a little bit more fast-paced in terms of curriculum, some teachers are very focused on attaining that goal. Like you said, they set, it's good to set goals and, but I think they're so focused on getting there that they sometimes forget that they need that, you know, students, student, 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 teacher interaction. And it's been increasingly that teachers have been asking for feedback, but I feel like that, like, you know, like you said, the culture around students feeling like, oh, the teacher really wants to hear what I have to say is something that students are very interested in listening to.
There are some places around the state and around the country that include student surveys related to classroom interaction because, because there are lots of things that can impact the way a student answers that, given on the day that they get to do that. We had not ever included it as part of the evaluation, but I know teachers at almost every level do some kind of beginning of the year interest surveys, things like that. But I do think the other piece of it is that when you think about, it was very important to us, and this was a concern, I would say nationally, when we talked about including student growth. We never, ever want a teacher to say that this is the student that stood between me and an effective evaluation rating. So we didn't want to make it about one piece of data or a student being underperforming because my job is to move all students. So we're very careful about including some of that soft data because although climate is important, and that's actually part of the other part of the evaluation system when you look at classroom environment. So how are they interacting with students? Is the environment welcoming? What does the exchange look like? Do students feel comfortable? Those kinds of things. So that really is in the other domains of evaluation.
And it will be interesting. And so ESSA has been passed, but exactly how states are going to demonstrate compliance with the tenants of ESSA is still being fiddled about. And at the federal level, one of the things that they've really pushed is this concept of surveys, student surveys, staff community surveys. It'll be interesting to see how Maryland kind of navigates, navigates that.
Thank you.
I think this is a great idea, and especially that you had the opportunity to, you know, for some of the schools to pilot it. Because instead of the teacher just, I guess, you know, writing down their plans, and I've done it for the last 10 years, and let me pull out the next, the next plan, you know, and making it through the book, you know, that's where they're heading. You know, I think that they now need to go back and reflect, okay, what are the student needs, not just, let me get through the book. So I think this is a great opportunity for the school system and, you know, for the students, you know, for their learning. I did have several questions. So the support and interventions that you have on there, now, does the teacher, let's say, this week, you know, she's had quite a bit where she's helped over lunch, or next week, it's been like I had, you know, she had some time after school. Does she keep, like, a log at that time, or does she wait until like the end and say, "Well, I've done all these things and let me put it in here"?
Do, the slide before where it shows supports and interventions?
Right.
I'd say 80% of teachers never fill that in. They uploaded everything, or they brought into their evaluation stacks and stacks of file folders and notebook agendas because what they do is, they have to document through the year. This is a working document that where there's a pre-conference in this time of year, a goal-setting conference, and then your mid-year conference to revise as needed. But I know in the last two years, we always built into, once a month after school, just teacher time to update their SLOs and things like that. Teachers, we gave lots, we found that was the hugest, the biggest struggle the first year is because they do really, really well for the first three weeks, and then with all that on their plate, they'd forget those things. So we gave them lots of strategies, and then they had to find their own. But every month, we'd remind them, "Are you updating your SLOs? Are you updating your complexity factors? Are you still taking the data? Is it working for you?" And some people would do something as, as easy as, they would actually just have 180 sheets of paper and a notebook, and they'd have a date at the top, and the kids would sign in when they came for an intervention, even during the class time, and say what they worked on, and there's all their documentation. But the kids are responsible for it. So it's, a lot of people are doing it electronically because if they have a parent meeting, they want to be able to, like, you know, be able to sort very quickly. So a lot of teachers are doing that. But it really is, nobody ever, I always, I laugh at that little box because nobody, they always attach, like, I call them diatribes. It's like, you don't have to bring your diatribe. But a lot of times, it's, it's very refreshing because it means they're looking at every kid and taking data. But that was a real struggle for us after the second year is having teachers find a way to make that happen so they are collecting data, not just saying, "I did lunch help."
And it was organic.
Yeah.
That, that they were doing it as they went. Because when you're doing it, and then you have to write it down to make sure you tell somebody that you did it, you want to make sure that you're not creating a system that's really onerous. And in the beginning, we had folks that were creating systems that were onerous, and they couldn't keep up with them. So everybody kind of, some people jot the notes in their planbook, some do it in a notebook, some do it in an Excel document, but it's up for them to figure out what works so that they can keep up with it.
Okay, that's a good idea. The other thing is, I know that you said that you do, right now, you are planning or asking for the teacher's goals. And you do an evaluation at mid-year. What happens, like I say, if the teacher's going through, and here it is, we're, we're not at mid-year, but they just see that this just is not working. Can that person then regroup at that time and say, "I need to reevaluate and do a different goal," or?
Yes, and that actually happened to us last year. We had a teacher who picked a research-based intervention that she borrowed from a school to do because we all borrow from each other for the funds. And in December, first week of December, the school asked for it back, and we didn't have the funds to pay for it at that time where there was going to be a lot. So she was, came to me and she's like, "I've got to change my goal. I still can use these students. I have this idea, but I need to change my goal because I don't have that program anymore." And that's what my whole SLO right now is based on. So we had to regroup. So that does happen. So we had to regroup. So that does happen, and that's where it goes, Roma, with the, with the whole, having that culture where people feel comfortable to come and say, I really need to talk with you, even though it's not January, to talk about regrouping, and talking about, kind of, refreshing or revisiting those goals we set, so that they are meaningful for that teacher and get that real data.
And Lisa, that is very specifically why we build that mid-year conference in. And we stress with everybody at the beginning of the year, that mid-year conference is the opportunity to come in and say, where are we? You know, are we on track, off track? What do we need to do? That, that mid-year check-in is, is so important.
Now, let's say if you have a teacher that likes to really do, I guess you would say, like, think outside the box, or very aggressive in their thinking, and they come in, and the, the, you know, it just, I guess you would say, like, a total flop. Okay, so then, then, do you kind of tell them to kind of back down, or do you still encourage them to be very, you know, aggressive in their thinking, to try to bring the students along?
We try to bring the students along, because they need to know from, they need, if I find, as the person who's evaluating them at that beginning conference, that they're way off base, it's my responsibility to share with them, and maybe, maybe that, that idea that they have, and usually, they're not too far off, to be honest. Usually, you can redirect them and re-guide them and say, hey, what data did you use to make that decision? And a lot of times, that will bring them around. It's also their evaluation, so they, they want to know right from the beginning, if you don't think that, as their evaluator, if that's not a good measure for them to use, because they don't want to be ineffective, they don't want to set themselves up for that. Sometimes, they won't be too happy for you, because they've put all that work in, and they think that, you know, but it doesn't mean they also can't do whatever maybe they're, they were wanting to do, it just may not be part of the SLO.
When you think about the outside-of-the-box pieces, for instance, part of the math standards has to do with mathematical practices. And last year, we had math teachers who were choosing the mathematical practices as part of their SLO. And the practices are embedded in the standards and the way students approach the thinking and the problem-solving of math. So to try to tease out how you're going to measure whether students applying mathematical practices or not, was a big challenge, but example of an outside-of-the-box thing, because it is part of the mathematical reasoning, and some of the other practices, that problem-solving piece, is part of the student score on the park assessment. So our eighth-grade math folks really worked hard to think about how they would measure that, and we steered that a couple of different ways and talked about it, but we encouraged them to try it, because it is part of student learning, and it is part of students' understanding and demonstrating their knowledge of, not only about the math content, but in the way they think and reason related to mathematics. So that would, is an example, so we definitely encourage it, but we also try not to set kids or anyone up for failure.
Because we knew that would be a hard one, so we visited with that PLC and that team October 16th of last year, and they revised theirs. It was just too unmanageable for them, they really had this great goal, but then it was just too hard to tease out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you very much for the presentation, very informative.
Is there any thought about also putting a box at the bottom about interventions for the teacher, to document, you know, if someone is progressing or borderline this, and, okay, these are the interventions that will help that teacher?
We always have a plan of assistance for teachers that need that level of support, and the plan of assistance would be for an ineffective evaluation. But for teachers, every teacher needs professional development. A lot of times, there's a piece of the evaluation after domain five, that there's comments from the administrator. So a lot of times, you'll put that in. Teachers also have the ability, under the professional responsibilities, which is domain four, to upload artifacts, just as, just as administrators do, to share the kind of professional development things they've done, or kudos and accolades they've gotten from other people, or if we've said that they maybe need to go to a behavior management course, we'll upload that they completed that course, or a webinar, or things like that. So, domain four is where you would most likely document that, and that is also part of the evaluation.
And to use a college analogy, you know, to take a 200-level course, you need prerequisite of a 100-level course. How do we convey that starting point to the grade below? Like you were saying, that the seventh-grade math teachers came in and said, we know we have to get our students to this level, so that they can go into the eighth grade. So how do we convey the expectations to the next lower grade, where you have to be?
Part of that is in the vertical articulation in department meetings. So, at the beginning of the year, when we're talking about data, and at the end of the year, and through different intervals throughout the year, because department meetings and professional learning community meetings happen every month. So, there's an opportunity to talk about it as we're looking at data, and there's a very fluid conversation between grade levels, as we all have gotten to increase our understanding of the standards, and thinking about what the major content is at each of those grade levels. So think about what their still-are challenges are, and teachers share that conversation back and forth through the data warehouse, partly, you can look at data and look at where there still are challenges, and places to start if there's still areas of weakness. But it also comes in a conversation in a department meeting, where people are talking about, well, here are the three or four ways I taught this, and does anybody else have any other ideas? So it's that whole kind of team approach, to be able to talk about it, so that you're thinking about, making sure you're shoring up any gaps and holes for kids as much as you possibly can.
Thank you.
And the data warehouse is a key component to that, and our content supervisors are truly the masters of that data warehouse, where they'll identify, you know, truly the power standards, the underperforming elements, and convey that to teachers at the very beginning of the year. They'll talk about how last year's did, and that's one of the reasons why park, ah, if they actually, if we get all of our park data back, per the way the regulation is written, by July 15th, we'll have a full month to kind of work through, and maybe even a month and a half, to work through all that data and put that in, so that we, we really can talk about that articulation across grades, and really what, where our kids seem to be, you know, exceeding, and then where they need, really need more work. But so, a key component of this, we haven't talked about the, the content supervisors, but the content supervisors are so embedded in, in all of this, in all of this work as well.
I like, I like this whole idea, because I think it, it requires the teachers, not they have it before, but to take ownership of, of where they want to be, or where they, they want their class to be, or throughout the school year. I guess, you guys talked a lot about the way it was handled in middle and high school, but I'm curious as to how it works in the elementary schools, because you have a teacher who teaches five different subjects that are all impactful, as to where they're going to head, you know, beginning in sixth grade, or, you know, and on through. But yet, you're limiting their targets to only two. So, do you center their targets on math? Do you center them on reading, on writing? I mean, what, what, I mean, they are teaching five subjects. Some maybe only four, if they switch out between science and social studies on a team approach. But how, that seems, it's very simple for the, for the content-specific teachers, but for an elementary school teacher, where their range is so broad, I don't, I don't know if you're really, how they're truly being evaluated, or if that's fair to only limit them to two.
Most often, and we, I don't have hard data to share, I certainly could get that from the supervisors, because we have awesome ones at the elementary school. They were, especially initially, the school would look at their data in general, and the principal would guide and say, oh, you know, we really need, our deficit area right now is reading. So let's, if you're all in agreement, let's have reading be as our, that's how we started, five years ago. I would say that the majority of classroom teachers, K through five, are using reading or mathematics, or maybe setting one goal, one of each, in those areas. That's what they primarily would be using if you, if you looked at that. It's the same exact process, though, in elementary school, and I haven't heard that it's cumbersome at all. I think they, you know, and that's where that PLC, because you have a fifth-grade PLC, or a primary and intermediate PLC, and a lot of times, they'll come to an agreement on what they want that focus area to be. I mean, we'd love to increase, and we want to increase every single school, but sometimes we have to focus on what is kind of, you know, the, the big knots. And so, they usually will come into agreement. I would say probably if we polled, and I can't, archive data, but ninety, I would say ninety percent of probably elementary content teachers are picking math or reading, or one of each.
Okay.
And then, you had a statement on here that you changed the thinking to reflect the gap between students in a class, rather than on focus subgroups. So, if, if you, if you want, I'm going back to elementary school. So you have a wide variety of, of student abilities within that classroom. So how, I guess I don't, I don't know how you, how you would measure that, because you will always have some children that will never reach other children in that class, or vice versa.
Right, remember how I said that that's what the CTEC was so wonderful for our school system, because they were able to give us other methods, and then setting those whole class average goals? And that really helped, because then, when you give those kids some kind of beginning baseline assessment, you could say that this, you know, break your kids up into groups, based on how they did on the pre-assessment, based on their starting point, and send different targets for each of those groups, because they are different learners and will progress at different rates. It's also very interesting, when you actually get into the process and see, when teachers start collecting that data over time in the course of the year, the subgroups just become, I hate to say this, when you're, when you're picking 25 kids or a class of 30, it's about each individual kid. There's not a teacher that ever came to an end-of-year conference, and they didn't want to talk about the growth of every kid who wasn't making the progress they thought they should make. They didn't care what subgroup they were in. They cared that that student, A, B, C, and D, didn't meet that goal that they had. And so, you know, they, they wanted to move every child. So it was really interesting to see that although we started with subgroups, when it came down to it, every teacher wanted every kid to move, they didn't care what subgroup they were in.
But they can, but they don't have to move completely to that goal, correct? I mean, if you have, based on what, on what their abilities are, they can move toward the goal, but not necessarily achieve it.
Exactly.
And then, the teachers still would not be, like, penalized, or whatever.
Not if they don't, not if they have supports and intervention that they showed, yeah.
So at least, at least there's something to show that they, that even though the child didn't reach the full goal and understanding, some probably never will.
Well, and keep, so keep in mind, the growth mindset says that you don't, so you don't say, these 25 kids will be seventy, 75 percent, that everybody will get 75 percent. You don't, you, you know, you look at, you look at ability banding, you go through all of that, and you measure growth from one to the other. The other part about subgroups is, we don't have interventions based on subgroups. So like, we don't have, like, this, oh, this is the intervention for this, this is what we do. It's not, that's, so, the whole concept of, of subgroups is a, is a, is a challenging one from an instructional standpoint, because we don't differentiate, we don't differentiate instruction based on ethnicity.
It's an artifice, artifice.
Absolutely.
Well, and looking at data for subgroups might tell you where kids are, but it doesn't tell you what to do next.
Right.
And if there were, if there were, was a book out there, then it would all be solved when we had an achievement gap. So, being able to have that conversation, I, I brought, I, I did an SLO training recently at the Easy Make Office for, for teachers, too. And I, I can leave a copy of this or send it through Metro. This is some of the data banding and setting differentiated targets. So when you talk about, if I have students that started out at 20 percent, I may not, you know, set a goal for 70, but I'm probably going to set one for 60, you know, like, I'm looking for big growth. But I'm, I'm trying to set a goal that's rigorous, but also that I think could be achievable, not so that I make sure I make all my targets, if that makes sense. So there's some more information here, I just didn't want to overload you guys. But there is, it's a short.
And if you want to have a really long conversation about somebody who gets really excited about this, other than Dawn. So Dawn is a reading language arts specialist in particular, and I are teaching, she's going to talk to you. But you're going to talk to Mr. Jaffers about this. He is all about the, the ability banding, and how you put that together, and how you differentiate, because ability varies based on topic. So as you move through a progression of math, you may very well be in an ability group here, but you might be here, you might be here, you might be here, and the fluidity of that has to be taken into account when you talk about student learning.
Ms. Bailey, though, I mean, I think, exactly, they're not penalized. I think that was, that's, that was a big concern in the beginning, and they're not, because if they have evidence of support and interventions, now, if they're, you know, thank goodness, because of this, we got away from, well, I taught it, they just didn't get it, I had to move on. That conversation, that means you're ineffective.
Right, oh, right.
But, but, exactly, then, nobody's, I feel this, this system doesn't penalize at all, as long as you're providing support.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to you, that, that's.
And, and teachers, I feel, are very comfortable with that piece of it. But it is hard to set targets, that's why we have to do the mid-year, and I, I say this to everybody all the time, it's a working document until about May.
Right.
It's a working document until about May, and then we have to say, yes, this is it.
Right, okay, thank you.
You've given us a lot of information here, and it's all good information. The way I see it, the SLO provides growth for increased student learning and develop highly effective teachers. The teachers take ownership of the teaching and how they are meeting their learning objectives. It takes into, it is flexible, and it offers that flexibility regarding student composition, unusual circumstances, or complexity issues. I like to develop them, because it gives new teachers, or new teachers to our system, or new to a subject or a grade level, the opportunity to increase their progress and their student learning without a negative word. I like the word "developing." And I like the professional learning communities, where it's a great opportunity for the teachers to get together and collaborate, and they are not choosing easy measures. They have to be rigorous, and they have to be achievable. And the process, to me, is prescriptive, is well-written and laid out with flexibility, and it's not punitive, it's diagnostic, to help the teacher become a highly effective teacher. Thank you.
I think what you've put together really addresses a lot of the concerns that were voiced when this was all first proposed. And it was a big question mark, because it was just sort of a, we're going to use measures of student growth to evaluate teachers, and, you know, boom, it was out there, but, but without being fleshed out. And because of that, I think there was a great deal of understandable concern. I think that the work that you've put into this, especially using attendance criteria, because we talk all the time about the fact that if a student isn't in school, if they're not in a class, then very difficult to reach them, very difficult for them to learn. And there are, there's so little control, in many ways, over ensuring that those students are going to be in class on a, on a consistent basis. Everyone does their best, they have multiple ways of doing so, but, but again, it's, it is to a, to a degree outside of the control of the teachers or the schools. And I think this, this process really recognizes, acknowledges that, and, and yet, still doesn't overlook any particular student. And, and that's one of the reasons I'm glad we're, I understand why it was important to start looking at subgroups, because there was, prior to that time, everything was, was delivered in the aggregate, and, and, you know, people fall through cracks when you just look at the aggregate. You really have put something in place that stresses the importance of, of the uniqueness of each child, of each class, of each class from year to year in each school, and, and the strengths and the growth potential of teachers as well. And with the multiple options, I think that puts a lot of the control into the hands of the teacher, which I think is most important. And, and it, it really, once again, underscores the importance of the data warehouse, because the data warehouse ensures that you can't just gloss over any particular child, because you have the tools at hand to really be able to take an honest look at every single student. So, the one, the only question I would have for you, is, I guess, two. One, what kind of a response have you had from the teachers in the pilot schools? And the second is, now that the pilot has presumably concluded, or will be concluding this year, then what?
Well, evidently, we did not do a good job in telling you that, because the pilot only was one year.
One year, okay.
Yeah, and then it was rolled out to all schools, so they've been doing it for four years. All schools in St. Mary's County have been doing this for four years.
And then, what kind of a response are you getting from teachers, and?
Um, we, we still get response, because we're tweaking it every year.
Right.
You know, so we're still listening to that feedback, and every year. But unlike the second year, when we were rolling out, and we were meeting every month to tweak, or answer questions, we do that in the summertime now. So I would think that's good. And I think once people got comfortable with the parameters and the structure, and that we want you to set lofty goals, but you do need to have evidence of intervention and supports, and it may take us a while to all get there and to, to do that. You know, Mr. Smith can probably tell you more, but I, as a building leader, didn't have people that were really against domain five at all. Domains one through four would sometimes have some, you know, that's the observation process a lot of times, and that's when you had some more, maybe, resistance, you know, to what they saw in that, that time and place, another presentation, but actually part of the evaluation system. But, other than answering a lot of questions and coming back to the table and tweaking, and still are. and still are, I think it's going, it is the best form of professional development that I feel teachers get because it's one-on-one. I really do. And I think it, it's just like a writing conference with a kid. That's how you're going to move a child to write, you know, is telling them what they need to do next. And I think that's what teachers get. I know personally, I have an SLO conference and the feedback I get from Ms. Montgomery is what, you know, validates what I do is good, but what is the next step for me professionally? So it's, it's professional development for all levels of us as educators. Everybody has an SLO.
And, and Ms. Montgomery's SLO is how well, everybody else meets the SLOs, the principals meet their SLOs, and Mrs. Montgomery's SLO with me is how well, you know, it's a, it is a, it's a lovely cascading focus.
The first year of the pilot, we actually had, we called it the pilot evaluation roadshow. And we actually went to all five of the pilot schools and did a presentation about the system because this was so new. And we have the national conversation about student growth and teacher evaluation. And there was a lot of angst, a lot of angst because as you mentioned, there are lots of factors that affect children's performance. And teachers have some in their control and lots that they don't. So we, we did the, as I said, the roadshow for those pilot schools. And then the next year, we did have, I, I'm going to call it an implementation dip because we weren't able to do that roadshow for every single school. So principals took it on themselves and rolled it out. And so it's gotten better each time. Are there still some teachers, and, and this is really the conversation that we have, this data is the data that's closest to your instruction. This data that we get to talk about, you're choosing valid goals for students and for yourself. And so because of what we're doing, teachers feel like they have some control and say, you know, a big part of the conversation in the beginning was the state test. And the state test results don't come back in the evaluation timeframe. And the other piece is, by the time you get it, those students have moved on and the next year's teacher can do something about it. But we're always looking at that data. We're always incorporating it. So it's not that the state test doesn't count, but by the time you get the state test data, I cannot go back and do something different with those students that I had. So although there may be some times where teachers feel like I'm, I'm proving that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do a little bit, they appreciate that they, they get to make some choices and that they're driving it and that they get to talk about their own kids and what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. So they, and that part can be very validating. We do not, I, I don't think we've ever gotten a lot of pushback, you know? It was new and with anything new four years ago, there was lots of, oh, now what are we going to do, you know?
It will go away.
It'll just go away.
But over time, people can see that we're being responsive, three SLOs to two. They see that we've made changes to try and honor workload and honor the time it takes and to be respectful of that while still keeping the integrity of the process. So we really, by and large, the phone is not ringing off the hook about Domain Five. It really isn't.
And it's, I, I think it's the fact that you allowed the, the people that affected to be a part of the process, which again, gave them more control, so.
So closest, the closest, and you've mentioned it twice, the closest to instruction. So the evaluation tool, the more we moved it away from federal state tests, way, all the way down to closest to the instruction, the, the better it gets each year. Because when you give people the power to set goals and then they actually work towards those goals, that increases self-efficacy. Self-efficacy is what really drives SLOs in St. Mary's County. If you believe that you can make a difference in someone else's life and help them learn something, if you believe it, really believe it, and then show evidence that you are doing it, you, it's self, it's self-fulfilling. Same thing we're trying to do with each one of our kids. So it's really, you guys are, you, this is a, this is a fantastic group. And they have, Dawn in particular, and Lisa in her current role and in her previous, devoted hundreds, if not thousands of hours to this work and talking about it. And, and we all, we kept, we always keep talking. And so we always, you know, as long as we're talking, we're getting better. So, great stuff.
Like, I just don't think that people fully understand or appreciate the, the many things that are wrapped into teaching and the, and the importance of the professional development and the discovery that a teacher has when they, when they establish these SLOs and, and then document, did it work, did it not work? Those professional learning communities having those conversations with your colleagues, what are you doing that's different than what I'm doing and what can I borrow from you that will help me in my instruction of these students so that they're getting things better? There are just so many pieces that are wrapped into this.
You're artists.
Absolutely.
Education is art. Teaching is an absolute art form. Science, scientific art, but it's, it's a, there's an, there's an art to it. There's a beautiful art to it, so.
Roma has one more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Roma? So one of my last questions was, if there's a specific, like, like you said, I was, all the, all the schools are doing it currently.
Every single teacher.
If one method works, so, like, teachers don't teach the, to the test because, I mean, it used to be like, sometimes we felt like teachers were teaching to the exam, but now it's like more, you know, interpretation and more than just, here's, here's the facts, memorize it. But because of that, a lot of times between schools, the same curriculum, especially in higher grade levels, is different, like, different programs are given by the teachers so that the students can learn in the sense that one teacher feels more comfortable with program A and another feels more comfortable with program B. In the reports, is there any way for the teacher to say, hey, this method really worked and I would like there to be like uniformity among the courses, among the schools, in that specific course, for that specific program, if, like, they could get more data on that specific program and how, how students perform with it? If that makes sense.
Are you talking about a course, particularly or our activities and programs used within a course?
A program within a course.
Um, I think that's the, when the teacher will talk about strategies, there's a part of the evaluation system or SLO where they talk about strategies that improve instruction they've employed. A lot of times, we just had an IXL presentation, a lot of times they'll put IXL, Membeam, Turnitin, those kind of things in those strategies list. It's up to the principal who's evaluating, but also that's where that PLC in the departments will talk about exactly, I think, what we were talking about before, that you have to have the conversation, what, what worked for you? Why are your kids' scores so high? I think Ms. Allen, you just mentioned that. And why aren't that, and so that, and those are really courageous conversations, Roma, to have. Kids, it's hard for kids to have them, you know, like, I didn't do very well in this, how did you do that? It's just as hard, if not harder, in a professional capacity to have those conversations. And that's what we hope this process does is saying, why are your kids scoring so much better than mine are on grammar? Because I use this every day and this is what I incorporate, but.
So there is that kind of open table, not open table discussion, but that communication between teachers of the same curriculum.
Absolutely, absolutely. But it's, it's still an ongoing job to make sure that we make it accessible, give the time, give the professional development resources to make sure that all teachers at least have the time and the ability to take advantage of that.
And when teachers find a strategy that really works or a program that they're implementing, then, and the principal sees it bear out the data, and sometimes that's a conversation with a supervisor to say, this person needs to share on a professional development day what they're doing and how they're implementing that. So there always is that constant dialogue about what's working and what's not across schools, you know? We even have technology to do that, having Google chats and, you know, being able to do different things. And for teachers that teach in really unique areas, like they're a singleton in a school, having those cross-county PLCs, they, they happen.
They do.
You know, there's one course teacher in a school. So they have a cross-county PLC at their level. So it allows opportunities for people to talk across schools because it's really important to talk to somebody who's teaching your content, if you're going to share ideas and, and see what else is working. I know when we first started, we were all about having a pre and post-test for everything. And that, we really morphed, especially in the unified arts areas, you know, we're doing so much more performance-based things because we're like, it only makes sense that the way we measure achievement in unified arts is by looking at artwork based on a rubric and, and coral performances and things like that, as opposed to a seat test, paper pencil and a bubble. So lots of things have changed and come a long way related to that. And, and picking assessments that really reflect the true breadth and depth of the content.
And I think that's the other important piece about those half-days that we have and the professional development days that we have. People seem to think that what goes on there is, is grading or, you know.
Right.
And it, it really is, a lot of this wrapped into, that's their time to have a conversation about, here's how my students did, how did yours do, what did you do differently? And so there is, I, I think there's great value in that. You, you've proven that by the successes of our students.
And that's fair day.
Mm-hmm.
That's, those are, those are the conversations that are going on. And in January, ultimately, we have Professional Development Day where the whole day is really delivered by teachers. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartwood. Be patient, Mr. Hartwood.
All right, we get up, do a stretch break. All right. Adult learners, we're supposed to, every 15 minutes, we're supposed to in some way, you know, interact and engage and move about, so.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Uh, tonight, we're going to request that, uh, for your approval to use a National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract, oh eight dash oh two. We've used this previously. And for tonight, it would be for the refurbishment of tennis and basketball courts at Esperanza Middle School. Excuse me. As you know, the FY 2016 CIP provided $700,000 for the refurbishment of outdoor courts at Great Mills High School, Chopticon, and Esperanza. The tennis courts at Great Mills and Chopticon High School were completed at the end of August. We were very concerned about the condition of the courts at Esperanza Middle School, so we took the step of doing geotechnical boring. And they were very helpful. But one of the issues at that school is the poor drainage across the court. And you could kind of see all that water puddling
Is that today?
In the, in the court. The, the borings were instructed because they showed that the asphalt itself was four inches, was in good condition. There was a gravel base of another four inches. But more importantly, the boring showed that the subsurface soils were heavily compacted, well-compacted. So that led to thinking about going forward to deal with the drainage issues. And so the recommendation was to use a geotexile fabric on the existing courts. And instead of milling down the court, we're going to put four inches of new asphalt on top of that. So the scope at Esperanza is pretty much like that of the other schools. You're going to remove all the fencing, the, the net posts, anchors, et cetera. We're going to clean and seal all the existing cracks. And then we're, we're going to install a petrol mat fabric and an asphalt tack coat. What's important about that is two things. The fabric itself prevents any reflective cracking up to the higher level, but it also becomes a water bearer. And that's very important when you're dealing with asphalt, is to have that type of protection, protection. They will, after laying the asphalt, two inches of a base course, two inches of the finish course, they'll check to make sure that there's no ponding in the courts. And then they'll go through and install all the equipment. Both the tennis courts and the basketball court will receive a primer coat and then three color coats. Again, that's really important because it helps seal that, that asphalt from water infiltration. Then the facility will get all-new fencing. And we, getting that point of, of the year where it may be tough, but we're, we're seeing about 30 days to complete it. The, the color coats are temperature-sensitive. So it could be that we, we lay the asphalt, do some temporary lines, and then come back in the spring if the environmental conditions aren't right. But that's all in the price. So the procurement vehicle is the NCPA contract oh eight oh two. Again, we used that previously on, on Great Mills and Chopticon. It's a national contract. And we are, St. Mary's County Public Schools is a member of that cooperative. And for our area, American Tennis Courts was awarded the contract. This contract's heavily used by a number of LEAs in Maryland. The pricing is highly competitive, and they have remained unchanged since 2013. American Tennis Courts is one of the largest tennis court contractors in the country. One of the unique things about that company is they self-perform all their work, including the paving. And as I said before, American Tennis Courts has successfully completed the refurbishments at Muntown High School, Great Mills High School, and Chopticon High School. American Tennis Courts is a MDOT certified minority firm. And American Tennis Courts also has a great relationship with our maintenance department, providing repairs for both the tennis courts and tracks. So where are we? The original fund balance, the funding was $700,000. We've used some money for consultants on this project. The Great Mills expenditures was just over $222,000. Chopticon High School, a little less, at $177,000 for a subtotal of approximately $401,000. As you saw from the documents we provided, that the proposal for Esperanza Middle School is $159,750.50. And we will be asking for a construction contingency of $20,000 for this project. So all of that brings us to about $581,000. And we have a projected fund balance of about $118,000 when this project is completed. So our recommendation to you is to approve the use of the NCPA contract oh eight oh two to American Tennis Courts in the amount of $159,750.50. And we also request your authorization of a construction contingency of $20,000. So I'll take your questions.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Uh, one, on the previous slide, do you know why Chopticon and Great Mills expenditures for the courts were, it was such a big jump? Is it just because of the fact that Great Mills had more fissures in there?
Yeah. If you know the layout of Great Mills, they have a lot more area because of the way the courts are oriented. And we did have to do some extensive crack sealing there all the way through the base course of the asphalt there. So that, those are the main things that differentiated that.
Second, um, second, were there any other, I know it would be hard to uproot the course and I, but are there any other surface types that you guys looked at as having, because I know asphalt is the traditional type of courts that you see all over.
Yes.
But.
Of course, you can do concrete courts, but those don't have the resiliency and the, so it's very hard on the players to play on concrete. So really, when it comes down to an all-purpose tennis court, asphalt is still proven to be the best subsurface.
My questions have to do with the Esperanza Middle School, that phase three erosion.
Uh-huh.
So where is this in relationship to where the erosion is happening and will this, you know, have any effect on?
Yeah, sure. The tennis courts are kind of on the west side of the bus loop.
Okay.
The phase three erosion is way across to the other side, across the, the playfields. So there really is no connection between the two.
Okay. Thank you.
If the numbers come out the way you projected, is there any thought of looking at another school that might need some work to use the fund balance?
If we do that, we're going to have to go back to the county commissioners and ask for basically a budget amendment. So it, it is possible, but there is a process involved in doing that. We can't just take the money and use it at another school.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you very much for the presentation.
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Adding four inches on top of the surface that's there already, granted, you're going to, they're going to pull up all the fencing and refence, but what about grading the area up to the sides of that? What will happen with that? Who's, is it necessary? Who will accomplish that?
Well, at the, we will basically taper the ends of this four-inch overlay.
Okay.
So it, so it does meet grade.
Okay.
Uh, but this is really a superior way to go at it because you're getting, you know, four more inches of asphalt.
Right.
So that, that was our thinking on that.
I just tapped in. I just happened to notice, as I was going through the bid document, some of the options that were available, and when I saw the piece about the cost for fill around the sides, I, it did cause me to wonder, since that had not been selected, what, how would that be handled? Thank you very much. I know that this has been a much longer evolution than any of us expected, but I think that the work that was put in is beneficial for the long-term outcome of this project. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
May I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education approved the use of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Contract, NCPA 08-02, in the amount of $159,750.50 to the American Tennis Courts Incorporated for the refurbishment of tennis and basketball courts at Esperanza Middle School. The Board further authorizes a construction contingency of $20,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Springer. Auditing Services somewhat previewed earlier. Now, you're on.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
I will say, it does feel a little weird to be up here talking about the next potential suitor, with Todd just leaving the building about an hour ago.[713.82][713.82](laughing). It's kind of like you broke up with your girlfriend-boyfriend, and the next day, you're already moving on.[719.17][719.17](laughing). I mean, the show must go on, but...
Good analogy.
Seems awfully quick.
It's because we broke up first, right?[729.12][729.12](laughing).
Apparently, it was a good break.[732.68][732.68](laughing). I've been working with Todd since I've been here for all 13 years. It's been a great relationship with both Todd and RSM, and hopefully, we'll have a great relationship with the next group. As you all are aware, the school system is really privileged to be involved in a lot of audits. We've got Title I audits, Title II, Title III, Head Start, Medical Assistance, Impact Aid, Construction Audits, Enrollment Audits, are one of our favorites, legislative audits. But of all those audits, this one, we actually have to pay for. Those other audits, we pay individually as taxpayers. So, this audit is required by law, as you see there in Comar. All LEAs have to have an annual independent audit. Regardless of who we choose, the state superintendent, actually, MSDU must actually approve the auditor as well, but they're not looking at it as we look at it. They look at the auditor to make sure that they're registered to do business in the state of Maryland, that they've got all their ducks in a row, that they're paid up on federal and state taxes, things like that. So, they just make sure they're in good standing. But we do annually have to get their approval every year. As we did talk about, we've been using RSM for many years on a year-by-year contract. And actually, ever since Ms. McCourt came on board, we talked about the need to actually get this out there on the street to do, to put out a bid for auditing services, just to do our due diligence with taxpayer money. As much as we like RSM and Todd, so this is, well, actually started rolling well over a year ago. So, those processes had already been started by the time Todd informed us that he was moving to Alaska, and this would be the last year for RSM. So, we put together an RFP, and we submitted it out there on eMaryland Marketplace and a few other things, and we had five firms respond. It's not a big market for qualified firms to provide this kind of service. Four are in the state of Maryland. Perry and Associates actually hails from Ohio. For those that you've been around a while, you may recognize a few of those names on that list. We had a five-member committee team of all highly qualified individuals that went through the proposals. Myself and Ms. McCourt were a part of that committee as well. We used an RFP mechanism, and Ms. Mail indicated that you all may have not seen that for a while, doing a lot of the bids. So, in this RFP, pricing was not the primary motivator. We set it up so that it was a 90% technical review of the proposal. Because for certain, sometimes what you might call high-level services, sometimes the lowest bidder is not what you want. This is more of a relationship with the firm. I start working with these folks usually in May, and it's really not done until November. We have a few things still, even after the 9:30 submission MSDUs, that have to be done. So, we set it up so that we reviewed, all five members reviewed the pack of the responses. We looked at things like their knowledge, their skills, their abilities, size of the firm, experiences they've had with other Maryland government agencies as well, especially of Maryland LEAs. Because as you can see with all the gasbies and everything that Todd went through in his earlier presentation, it's gotten more and more and more complex. There's pros and cons to that, but it is what it is, and you really need to have a firm that has that technical expertise and understands that market. So, after the committee did the technical review, these are the final scores, but after we did the technical review, you can see there was two clear leaders among the five, and actually, Clifton Larson Allison, Allen, actually held a slight lead over SB and Company after the technical review. Once that was done, we opened up the pricing, which was submitted separately in a sealed envelope, and the pricing for SB and Company was significantly better than Clifton. That pushed them ahead by a few points, because price still is a factor to consider. So, I don't think, let's see if I have anything else, I apologize. Oh, okay. The slide changed a little bit from the one I put together. I was told there was a policy or procedure change, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget that. So, the, and this is in the Board Agenda item, but for everybody else, the Year One savings with SB and Company, which is the one that we're recommending, is $30,000 over what we're paying right now. And with the five one-year options, that could amount to about $180,000 for the Board. So, so I, my recommendation to the Board would be to approve the item, the Agenda item as presented.
And for, and just for context, the previous firm that was $89,000 for the service?
Correct.
This firm is $30,000 less.
That is correct.
Right.
I don't have any questions.
No questions? Okay.
Okay, so, I guess what I was looking at, were you scored, yeah, it was five of you sitting there, and you were scoring the different companies. Did you have like a check-off sheet? Yes, they have this, yes, they have that? Or is, that's how it...
Yeah, and if you need that, we can provide that to you. But yes, we did have a sheet that we went through, and we did. The scoring was broken out, there was, I can't remember exactly, but 20% for this, 30% for this, and we went through each proposal and compared all five of them to each other.
Okay. Okay, I just wonder really how you got to that.
Yeah, usually, the first year of an engagement is the big nut, because they don't normally accept at face value the prior auditor's work. Was that factored into their proposal?
Yes, they actually, a couple of the firms mentioned that in there. Just as an industry standard, even though we've been with RSM for so many years, when firms take over or replace another firm, for the most part, as a professional courtesy, they allow them the opportunity to look at prior year's working papers. So, most firms do that, and I actually talked to Todd about that. That will be done on this one, so whoever takes over this one will have the opportunity to look at RSM's working papers that they did with us.
Okay. And then, you said that this, the firm has experience with other LEAs. Can you mention any of them?
Yes, actually, we did a reference check. Ms. McCourt and I contacted Frederick County Public Schools and Hartford County Public Schools and talked with their CFOs. They were in situations where they had Clifton. They put out an RFP as well. SB came in at significantly lower pricing, as they are here with us. They were a little reluctant, but they went with them, and they've been very happy, and they gave them very good references.
Thank you.
Where is SB? Where is, where are they located?
Hunt Valley, Maryland.
Okay. And then, for the staffing, I'm assuming that they put together a staffing proposal for the audit. Is it similar to the same structure as what we have now?
Yes.
Okay. And then, to Dan's point, so the price that they are quoting right now is valid for this year and then five years, there's no opportunity for them to increase that price? Are there any clauses that would?
They have in there that they will hold to a firm fixed price.
Okay.
And each year, their price goes up about $1,500, which is extremely conservative.
Okay. And then, what if they have, if they have to do anything outside of the scope of their normal work? Is that included, or is that, or is that net on?
I mean, if you're talking some, a real outlier, we could be billed for that, but they, because they've done enough now that they understand what needs to be done, that should all, like, for RSM purposes, as an example, I worked with them for 13 years, and I know Mr. Carney did for several. There was one year out of the 13 that we had an additional billing, so they really do their best to try to hold to those prices.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Hall?
The questions that I had have been answered. I was just wondering, with the significant difference in price, would the scope or the practice on how the audit was handled change in any way over what we've currently experienced?
Going through their proposal and talking with the references, it will be handled in the same manner, it will just be different people up here. This is speculation on my part, but SB is, I believe, being very aggressive with their pricing to gain market share. So, they're giving up essentially a lot of profit to gain market share. I think they understand that if they go head-to-head with Clifton, people will choose the known entity that they've been dealing with for years instead of them. So, to, in order to win those bids, those RFPs, they have to be significantly better, and it's working. They're gaining market share.
And this is something that will come back to us each year to approve?
If you wish to come back as an action item or an informational item, that, I'm good for, however you want to handle that, that's up to you, I'm fine.
Well, I think with this being a firm that's new to us, and as you've indicated, I mean, the, we've been with the same firm for a very long time, and they have significantly cut their price as compared to what we've been paying, and because they are, I mean, they're known to some of the LEAs, but I think at least to bring it back after a year to determine what your experience is, to report on that, so that we, so that we have it on the calendar, we know that it will come back.
We can do that through this mechanism, or we could do it through the Audit Committee as well. I think that's one of the things they're tasked with, if you want to do it that way as well. We did the five one-year extensions to protect us.
Right.
If Year One doesn't go as we expect and as they laid out in their proposal, that gives us the option to get out, not that we want to start all over with a new RFP, but worst-case scenario.
Right. I think it's just another level of accountability for us, and so, you know, I'll leave it to the Board to have this conversation as to how to handle it, but I just put that out there as a consideration.
Well, to Mr. Springer's point, it is very common when you are trying to build a book of business and you're moving into a different audit area than what your firm has typically done, to go in and underbid, which is why I asked the question if they're gonna have the same staffing plan.
Right.
So, you know, there's various levels of accountants, so if they're gonna dump a bunch of first-year staff members on us, probably not the most ideal for our financial staff to have to deal with.
Right.
So, probably what they did is that they kept the same staffing plan as what we've had before, meaning years-wise and abilities, but cut their hourly rate in order to win the bid.
Okay.
Because now, once they've won this bid, now just the same thing we did, or we did, we went and checked, you know, with other LEAs within the state, so now, oh, here's another school system that we do. So, it helps them to build their book, so they undercut now with then eventually the attention, you know, to build their business.
Mm-hmm.
Plus, it's a very prototype environment. There's people that jump firms very quickly and easily, so, you know, with the people leaving in Frederick, it's probably very easy for, you know, someone else to feed off of those people who aren't moving to Alaska. And, you know, you all of a sudden have the same accountants that are still working on the same thing, just with a different firm.
Got it.
Yes, no?
That's correct, yes. Even with RSM, we had, every year, we had new accountants. We would usually have a senior accountant, senior auditor, that was the same person year in and out, but they would bring...
Right, but different staff and senior levels, right?
Yeah.
Right. So, right, so the price difference doesn't, the, the price difference is a great break
for us, that they're trying to enter into the market, but as long as you still have that same staffing level and that same expertise, which is why scoring the technical piece, I think, was so important at first.
Right.
So...
And we didn't factor this in, but they are also an MBE enterprise as well.
There you go.
I saw that. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Anyone else? All right. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved the contract award for auditing services, RFP, SMCPS, 2017 FSAS, for the 2017 audit to SB and Company LLC in the amount of $59,500, and for the continued use of their services at the fee set forth in their proposal response throughout the duration of the contract, which has the potential to be valid through the audit year ending June 30, 2022, fiscal year 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's right, it is a new relationship.
I like how you, so really, what we're doing is, we're not overly committing. This is kind of like a, just a lunch.[1589.48][1589.48](laughing). We're going out to a lunch, if it goes well, we'll go have dinner.
It's a one-year.
It's just a one-year.
It's one-year.
It's like a lunch.
But is it, if you get a watch, then you know you're in trouble here?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hall?
I have a small problem. I loaded this two days ago, and it's not here right now. Fortunately, I am always prepared, and I have the presentation on a stick in my book bag. Give me one second.
Well, you can actually go in through Board Docs and pull it up on Board Docs.
I don't think it runs, it'll roll quite correctly.
You have to scroll through. Go grab the stick, come on, it's 8:30.[1632.28][1632.28](laughing). We're gonna have a little, you know, little chat.[1635.44][1635.44](laughing).
It's her stretch break.
Yeah, it's your stretch, it's your stretch break. More than coffee, it's lunch. It's a solid lunch. It's a solid lunch in a nice place.
You really did like, you really did like that analogy.
Quick, Ms. McCourt, what movie line?[1658.44][1658.44](laughing).
Come on, Tammy.
Oof, that's, no, that's a commitment.
All right.
You're gonna make me get out of my chair, aren't you?
We might. Go to computer.
Get the glasses.
I can't read it. Okay.
Oh, door closed.
Store and go.
We're almost there.
There it is.
Top one? Eureka!
We didn't make you get out of your chair.
All right, I would've dragged it and put it on the desktop in case there's a problem with the stick, but that's okay. You're, you're good.
That's what I get for being prepared, but it's putting it on two days ago.
The world changes in a minute.
Yes, it does.
So does the desktop in the Board of Ed presentation.
It pays to just have it on a stick.[1724.48][1724.48](laughing).
Very nice.
All right. Thank you, sorry for that little bit of a delay. I'm here to talk to you about early childhood grants for mental health services, and Ms. Mail actually helped us with the, you know, the request for proposal process, but she was not able to be here this evening. So, just some background information for you. We know that young children are experiencing many mental health challenges that are impacting their early learning, their social interactions, and just the overall well-being of the family. And I just put a piece of research that really has guided our decision-making and our request. It's estimated between 9% and 14% of children birth to age five will experience social and emotional problems that negatively impact their functioning and development. So, last year, we started very, very small with a small bit of money into a grant for mental health professional. Many of you remember that. And so, what we're looking to do is replicate and have a grant-funded student and family counselors for our young children. So, what we'd like to do is use Judy Center funds, $45,000. and Head Start funds, thirty-five thousand dollars, and use those grant funds to support and provide services to our economically disadvantaged young children and their families. And given the need, the research, and the potential benefits, we've budgeted funds for this licensed mental health professionals to meet with our students at school and equally important in their homes so that we can get the whole family. Just a reminder of how we started very, very small. We had a promising grant, grant model. We used some ECE money from the Judy Center for student and family counseling last year, and we got really positive feedback for it. And when we talk about surveying, here are some, here's some feedbacks from some, some of our folks. A daycare provider said, "We noticed a change with how the child was able to control his anger and know when he needed to step away and regroup. The child's behavior was more manageable and we didn't have to call mom every day." Thought that was pretty powerful. And that's just some of the information about where we began. We had a mental health professional, a licensed clinical social worker. We really are seeing an increase in children that are dealing with trauma and some significant mental health issues. And so they, the counselor worked in small group lessons and during play groups and with family activities last year. We'd like all of that to continue. Some more feedback. A mother told us, "My, my child's behavior has improved and he responds to me better. The behavior plan has already begun to work. There have been fewer outbursts and he enjoys the praise. He doesn't seem as sad and talks about his feelings." Pretty powerful. A teacher quoted, "Child's more independent, behavior issues have decreased, and less redirection is necessary." If we can get those problems managed when they're in pre-K and kindergarten, the child's going to be much more successful as we go through. So for Head Start, we're looking to essentially do the same thing and do the same thing we started at the Judy Center, but more of it. We want to provide counseling for children and families at school or in the home. We want to deliver services for small groups of children and individual children. Conscious discipline is a part of the program that they use in Head Start. And then we're going to ask that mental health professional to collaborate. If there is a PST meeting or if there's a team meeting with the parents' consent and the parents' involvement, to be there as part of that. So what, this is the process. A request for proposal solicitation was issued on August the 29th for two weeks. One proposal was received from Mackenzie Cabina. And the proposal was acceptable. There is a process when you only get one proposal and it's in accordance with the board policy and regulations, DJC, DJCR. So we have a competent person. This happens to be the person that was doing it before. She does have other counselors that work for her. So we're increasing, it's going to be more work than one person can do. But we felt comfortable, even with one, just one bid, we felt comfortable that she could do it. So I am seeking, I'm requesting that the Board of Education please approve this.
Was there any reason you think there was only one proposal?
That's a good question. And to be really honest, I don't have any hard data, but we're asking people to work at night and we're asking them to go into people's homes. And, you know, it's, it's not a huge amount of money. So I, I believe that's a deterrent. I think if we were closer to a metropolitan area, we might have more. We know that there's a lot of shortages of, of people in...
Licensed clinical social workers in the area.
And honestly, I was a little concerned when I saw it, but when I really read through everything, she's got other counselors that will, that will be working with her. So I feel like they can manage the load, but that's a good question.
Also, is there a certain age that you see students are more in need of the support? Because I know you were focusing on, you, you said in the beginning what age group you're focusing on, but is there a specific, like even a smaller age range where you notice that these students, this, these students of this age are needing more support than younger older ones?
We are seeing young children coming into school. And many of the children in our Head Start programs and some in, we have pre-K three in, in two of our Title I schools, they're coming in and we're seeing challenges for, for children as they come in at those very early ages. Some executive functioning kinds of skills, some ability to manage frustration. Very often, they don't have the language skills. And they, they need some, you know, social, social support. And the parents are asking for that help. So we're happy to provide it with, with this use of funding if you all approve.
Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver? Yeah, mental health is so important. And to be able to work with children early on, it really sets a tune for the rest of their lives. And yes, you are correct, mental health services, whether it's psychologists, psychiatrists, counselors, whatever, especially in the Southern Maryland region, we are in great need of.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but I do know that she does, she is in a group up near Charlotte Hall. So is that what you're saying, like those, she's also said, like maybe some of these other people could help us?
Right, she had a, you know, subcontract, subcontracting proposal within it that said, "I will bring on these people if I'm, you know, if I'm selected." And they're committed to working with her and they also meet the credential, so.
And I know that you said, you know, because, you know, it's at night and maybe not quite enough pay or maybe a lower amount of pay, I would say. But I'm going to tell you that these people are full. I mean, you know, they, you know, to, to, like when I was at St. Mary's Hospital, trying to get some of these people into these services was very difficult.
We also know, along with your point, that transportation is a barrier. So if the counselor can go to the home, and sometimes, you know, if they're not comfortable with the home, we'll meet you at the library. We had one that met at the daycare. You know, that, that, those are fine, you know, that we are seeing that that's a need.
And then it says as needed, but you, this person will have specific hours? And also will, I mean, is it part of the teacher's recommendation? Or is it that the parents or grandparents or guardian says, "Well, I believe they need assistance"? I mean, is there like a sign-up or?
There's a careful review and a criteria because, like the Judy Center as an example, they look and see who is being seen or reviewed with like Center for Children. So we, we want to make sure that we're, we're helping people who have a need for this. And if somebody already is going to Center for Children and they get the support they need, then we're going to pick somebody else. Yes, it can be when a family reaches out and says, "I need help." It can be when a teacher reaches out and says, "I need help," principal. There's a lot of collaboration. We put the Head Start nurse on the actual selection committee because we felt it was really important to have that medical set of eyes looking at, you know, what, what it is that we need to do. And the nurse in Head Start is very involved in helping to assess some of those mental health needs.
Thank you.
What are the prospects for long-term availability of this funding? As I've said before, you know, if you want to use a grant for something, you better be willing to spend your own money because once this is up and running, it'll be hard to cut it out.
That is a very good question. What I can tell you, and I'm, we feel strongly, the Judy Center we've had for many years, we feel strongly that this is important and we will make a commitment to budgeting in. The Head Start grant is a five-year grant. We feel strongly, based on what happened last year with the counseling in place, that we will budget it in. Do I know that we'll continue to get the increases that we've gotten in, in the last few years? The pre-K expansion grant, the Judy Center expansion grant that was federal money? I don't know. But the grants that we're getting for a long period of time, we feel strongly enough to say that's a priority and we will budget it in.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. It was a great presentation. And I know when Scott and I met on Monday, I think one thing that probably is a school system, I don't know if we do a great job of, is marketing ourselves and that we have these programs available. A lot of times during budget time, the focus is on salaries and teachers and things like that. But these are truly social programs that benefit everyone in the community. And I think, the Thunder King, you know, that, that I think we really need to put, and I'm not saying that you're not doing it. I'm just saying that it, I think the burden falls on us as well to, you know, to let everyone know that, you know, these are not necessarily programs that are available through, through the county social services program, but that we do ourselves. Secondly, I know everyone reads the newspaper and you always read the police blotter. And, you know, I think today there was a gentleman that was arrested for, you know, heroin in the home and all this other stuff. And there was a five-year-old child that was in the home in his or her bedroom, you know, with paraphernalia around him. So when you read things like that, that five-year-old child is in our school system. And I think everyone focuses on the adults and the problems that the adults have. But every time they reference a child, those children are also our responsibility. And I think this, you know, grants like this and the things in the work that you're doing goes a long way as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mental health services are vital to the success of our students. And I agree, the sooner we identify these students with problems, the better off we can help them resolve their issues so that they can become successful students. I also know that it is a shortage of mental health professionals in the Southern, in St. Mary's County. As Mrs. Weaver said, I agree with everything she said. I think it's great that you did find somebody to provide this service because it's not easy for students to be effective learners if they are suffering with mental health issues. And mental health is an area that has been in the dark, but it is coming out into the light. It's just as important as our physical health. Mental health is essential and they work together. Thank you for another wonderful presentation. Every presentation you do is excellent and it's clear and it's easy to understand.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Last year, when several of us were at the presentation at the Judy Center, this was a piece of what was discussed. And, and I think we all knew then the value that would come out of it. So I was really pleased when you brought this forward. The opportunity to help students gain coping skills and then to take it into the home so that the, the approach is being modeled. And, and then additionally, to really, really understand more about what's going on with that student by going into the home is incredibly helpful. So I'm pleased that the social workers, the mental health professionals were willing to step up and, and make this happen because this has been discussed. They're, they're very few. It's difficult to get in to see them. And, you know, the, they, their practices are quite full. And, and some of them, I, I saw just yesterday that one that I know of headed by a friend is shutting down. And, you know, that's, that's difficult. And so I'm pleased that, that, that we're going to be able to go forward with this. And we will take it year by year. Thank you very much.
We'll keep writing grants.
All right, with that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award for mental health services for the Head Start and Judy Center Early Childhood Programs, RFP SMCPS 2017, MHS 2 Mackenzie Cabina LCSW C, up to eighty thousand dollars for fiscal year 2017, to provide services on an as-needed basis throughout the duration of the contract, which has the potential to be valid through September 30th, 2021. Future year expenditures will be contingent upon the receipt of grant program funding from state and federal funding sources.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall.
Okay, with that, just a quick program note. We have the first school calendar community session.
Community forum.
Next Tuesday from six until eight at the Tech Center. So I know the request has gone out to schools and PTAs for parent representatives. So come and share your views.
We're anticipating representation from every single one of our schools from all of our levels.
Right, so come and share your views, but not past eight o'clock. No, just kidding. Okay. And then with that, our next regular board meeting is Thursday, October 13th. It's Thursday, changing things up a bit in the month of October, nine o'clock in the morning. We're adjourned.